All this meeting, today, regular meeting of the City Commission of Rio Grande City. It is Wednesday, March 19th, 2020, approximately 6:14 PM. Here in Commission Chambers, City Hall 5332 East US Highway 3, Suite A, Rio Grande City, Texas. With this time we hand a dedication by Commissioner Vasquez, honored by the pleasure of the leadership by Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you all for allowing us to get together and conduct this meeting. We ask you all that you keep everybody safe from these terrible virus that we're having to deal with. We ask you all that you bless this public that will be here with us in attendance. We ask you all for the cleansing of this great nation. We ask you all that you bless those that have been strictly in our sick with this disease. And we ask you all that they recover and get well. We ask you all that you help us stay safe, that we help people understand what we need to do in order to keep ourselves as public servants, ourselves as well as police officers and first responders. We ask you all that you take care of us and bless us in what we're doing. We ask you all that you bless this great city. We ask you all that you bless this great nation. In Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Amen. For the reasons of God, the hand of God is over America. Yes, we are all God's children, one in this world, and the people who worship him as well as well. Honorably, we are the best citizens in Texas, one city in God, one in his name. This time we have item 1B, local friend McFlorme, Ms. Dusson.
May I go again?
Here.
We are working with Dusson.
Here.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
There.
We have one.
Thank you. This time we have a public forum, which is item 1C. I know how many individuals that wanted to speak. At this time, we'll proceed with this item so we can know they're here just for that one item. So let's go ahead and have the conversation. If we can start with Ms. Alberto Escobedo. Alberto Escobedo. Fair. Are you going to have someone call in? Yes, whoever is going to call in.
I'm going to call.
By the way, it's listed here.
Because there's some that are going to be phoned. So they'll be phoned, and then you'll have to pick up the phone and put up your speaker.
Okay. So we can do the people that are here first and then call. That's fine. Mr. Escobedo, would you please, just for the record, there'll be a three-minute time limit, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you. My name is Alberto Escobedo, and I'm here this evening to address in public forum agenda item 8F, which is to discuss and take possible action regarding Grandy Garbage Collections Company extension and contract in return to service, returning to service letter. It is to my understanding that this contract is not under renewal until November. My question to you is what is the hurry in extending this contract at this time? Has the city considered bringing the services in-house and saving the city monies? I would like to remind you of the issues with trash collection back in 2015, or shall I say, the lawsuit that the city found itself, in which cost taxpayers close to half a million It's my understanding that a meeting took place in which certain city officials and Mr. Hernandez discussed Grandy Garbage Services. All I ask the council is transparency, better managing of our taxpayers' money, and to move our community forward. That is all, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Escobedo. Troy Bateman is calling.
He's calling.
Okay. Mr. Eloy Sarate, is he here?
He's video.
He's on video. Which one here are video, which are the persons here? Let's make sure.
Mr. Billy Canales.
Mr. Billy Canales is here.
Mayor Troy is on the phone. He's been waiting for this to be transferred in.
Okay. If he's on the phone, go ahead and transfer him in.
Transfer him in.
Could you?
Hello? Yes, is this Mr. Troy? Yes, hold on, I'm going to keep on speaking.
Hello, Mr. Bateman. You're on speaker. You're on speaker. And at this point, was it under, you were here to discuss the items in executive, or was it the item here for public forum? Under public forum, or what we were going to discuss here? Because if it's under public forum, we have a three-minute window right now. But if you were going to discuss anything under the items under executive session, then that's something we can discuss, because we're going to obviously need your information.
I think it's for the public forum.
Okay.
What I sent to everyone in an email this afternoon, which I'd like that to be a part of the record.
Okay.
Was kind of a history of our relationship with the city of Rio Grande. We've been there since 2000 through the first phase, 2007. And during that initial phase, there was a smaller community, less vibrant community. They're going through a lot of challenges at that time with coming up with a development plan to grow the city, a plan to, the infrastructure plan wasn't in place with the water and sewer for the city. But, you know, we found a vitality there and a spirit there that helped us develop the 20 acres that was next to Walmart. And that spirit, and I tell people this all the time, that the city has a, and has had a theater in that location there. And they look at me and they say, how in the world could a theater go there without small of a community? We tried to put it into big communities. And I really have said this over the course of the years, that that community and the groups coming together, the school administration, the mayor, the county, the Star County Industrial Foundation, everybody that came together during that time to make that happen is the reason why that occurred. And then come forward 10 years approximately, we get a call from someone that we worked with back in 2000, and they say, we need more help, bring in more retail into this market, and some help doing it, which led us to our project at 755 and 83. And that relationship and that spirit and the community and the leadership of this community is making these things happen. And we just find it encouraging and definitely a positive aspect for new businesses that come in, families that want to root there. We're changing the college layer and growing that, and the hospital growing. We're doing the right things from a planning standpoint. And I think the overall structure of the city council, the mayor, definitely the city manager and his staff and the leadership they have given us over the last eight months as we've developed this project, it has been remarkable. Because we deal with a lot of cities, and a lot of cities are like, eh, if you want to come, just come, do what you need to do, we're not going to really help you. These individuals have gotten into the nuts and bolts of what it takes to grow a city. And I just wanted to say these words to you as a recommendation of these people, but a recommendation of the city in the spirit of Rio Grande. Because I know you guys are promoting the status of the city, and I think that keep this going and keep the great planning going forward in the spirit of the city. Also, keep these people in place that look forward and welcome the growth of the city as you progress through this. And I think that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Bateman. Obviously, we've been working together to promote this, this project, this multimillion-dollar project, and I'm glad that it's coming forth. I see plenty of movement there, and we're certainly glad that we're part of this. Granted, right now, we're in a moment of crisis, but nonetheless, we're going to get through this like we have many or in other instances in history of Rio Grande City and the surrounding communities. But again, thank you so much for calling in and for your time, and the project looks magnificent, sir. It's coming along very nicely, in spite of all the setbacks or situations that we're dealing with. It's coming along, and I see a lot of progress there. So thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, this will pass, and, you know, our prayers are out to your families and to the community. I know this will change over the next 30 days and hopefully get better as we go through this resolution of what we're dealing with. But your community will be strong, and I know our community up here will be strong also. And hopefully, we'll see a much more positive economic and vitality out of everybody after this is all done.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Mr. Eloy Sarate.
Mr. Eloy Sarate, he's going to be extended on Billy Canales next.
Okay, Mr. Canales.
Hold on, is he ready for emergency meeting?
Okay. If we can go ahead and proceed with that.
Post it.
We can post it?
It will soon up to the... Let's agree.
Go ahead and we'll...
Go ahead, let's do that, and we can continue with the public forum. Mr. Canales, pasete, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Our truck sales, Mr. Canales. How are the truck sales?
Well, they're doing fine, but I think it's mixing to slow down.
That they shut down the factories after all?
Well, there's a lot of parts that come from China and stuff like that, so they're not able to complete the cars, so they're going to shut down some of the plants.
Passela, Mr. Canales. Just for the record, you have three minutes.
Okay, well, as you know, I have the Chevrolet dealership, and I've been here for 25 years. The automotive business is very restricted, and we're watched all the time by all different kinds of, so the business has to be really taken care of because of all the monies and stuff that goes through. But I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Perez. Just to say that in that position, the city manager, you really need somebody that has worked with numbers and has worked with government laws and things like that, just like we have to do all the time. And I think since he's been here, things have kind of straightened out in the city as far as the finances go, that kind of thing. Because I know that at one time, they weren't there where they needed to be. And so, on behalf of my part and being a, I've been in the Chevrolet business for 57 years now, and I know how it is to work with numbers and that kind of thing. I've started working in San Benito, then moved to Brownsville, and then moved to McAllen, all with the Chevrolet dealerships. And so I know the business from the parts of, and I know that it needs to be gone by a lot of regulations and things like that, just like the city does. And I know Mr. Perez is able to do those things, because I've talked to him in many cases, I've dealt with him, and I know the city is doing a lot better since he's been here. So we need to get over the fact that he's not from Rio Grande City and all this other stuff. Because a lot of those businesses that are there, and that's what I went through when I came here, a lot of those businesses that are going to open there, they're not going to have people from Rio Grande City managing those things. There's a lot of people that are going to come from out of town. So we need to get over that thing, you know? But like I say, in his case, I think he's in the right place. I think we need to keep him there, because he knows the numbers, he's worked for the state in the tax department. Grinchelli is the one that made my dealership. He's the contractor that made my dealership. And I know Grinchelli works very well. I worked with him, I'm friends with him, he still calls me. But I know that in his situation as city manager, he needs to know what's going on over there, and he needs to work well with him, that kind of thing. That's a big project, and...
You have 15 seconds to wrap it up, and I hate to put a time limit.
No, that's fine. That's fine. I'm not a big speaker, but I just wanted to say my part, that I think he's done a good job. Sometimes we have to get after people and that kind of thing to do their part, but that's still things that we got to do. So on my behalf, I'd like to say that I'd like to keep him as a city manager. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Right through the podium, Mr. Vale. You have three minutes, sir, and I'll go ahead and let you know when you have 15 seconds to summarize your, but thank you so much for being here.
My name is Sam Vale. I'm here as the chairman of the board of the Star County Industrial Foundation, and also as the significant employer. We have over 80-some-odd people that work in our business. And when I came in, we were waiting, and I sat in the city manager's chair, and I thought to myself, why would anybody want to sit in this chair? The longevity of a city manager is very short. Think back. How many of our city managers have lasted multiple contracts, I might say? And so I would like to, on behalf of the Industrial Foundation, say that we have had a very good relationship, not only with the city commission, but also with the city manager. Because most of us know the commission well, some of us longer than others. And I think that it's very important that you have a working relationship that, that I'm going to use a, I only, I was in shot put, I wasn't having track, but I'm going to say, it's not the first lap that counts, it's where you finish that counts. And I think that your city manager has done a good job working with the foundation. Took him a little time. I asked him when he first came on board, did you bother to check the longevity of city managers in this town?
Are you sure you want it?
And I haven't forgotten about that. And so I think he's come a long way. I know the Star County Industrial Foundation president, Rose Benavides, is very appreciative of the ability to work very closely with the city, and I think that's important, particularly today. It's not just about having successfully established a new shopping center that's going to provide conceivably up to 500 jobs for the community. It's important that, those are all important, but it also means that you're looking to the future. We all have a challenge today because of the COVID-19. And I think that it's, couldn't be in better hands with the current leadership to take us through that process. Because I think that the next year is going to be critical, and nobody needs to be wondering where are they going to be. I think that to the extent that you gentlemen and ladies have performed well, part of it is because, like I know in my business, it all comes down to my staff. They're the ones that take us where we really go. And so I support any efforts that you would have to continue with the city manager and your relationship with the Star County Industrial Foundation. I know Rose Benavides could not be here right today, because she is out working on establishing testing centers for people in Star County, which the city is going to be a major part of. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vale. Thank you, Mr. Vale. Mr. Clark, I want to answer. Just for the record, sir, you have three minutes, and I will let you know 15 minutes prior to, I thought way you can summarize it at that point. But please, take your time.
Okay. I'm here to talk about Mr. Perez and the work we've done with you guys and the way we worked in the community and the service on the tour, water lines, streets and everything, the attention that Mr. Perez put to the job. One of the city managers that I ever met that goes to the field often, often, you know, he goes out there, takes a look, asks questions, supervises, supervises employees, you know, asks questions. And probably I don't have to tell you, you guys, you probably guys know everything, you know? You've seen it. I mean, and so just letting you guys know that I'm a happy contractor with you guys and Mr. Perez, because we don't got no problem with the pay and the way we communicate, you know? I've been working a long time with you guys, and I've seen a lot of difference here with Mr. Perez and you guys. I think you guys be doing an awesome job together, so keep it up. I mean, square it out, whatever it is, you got a good guy there. He can work with two different kinds of people, you understand, you know? You can go talk to the people, you know, to guys like me, he can talk with guys like Yos de que nosotros estamos de acuerdo, pero mira, ustedes saben lo que hacen, Cristo Perez, es buena persona y se está haciendo buen trabajo. Y Pramino, Darby, Nunez. Todos sabemos de eso. So ustedes saben lo que hacen, y ojalá que sigamos adelante y vayamos trabajando bien. Y sigamos siendo amigos todos. Hicemos todo del pueblo.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Thank you guys.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Clark, you might make it as a politician, sir?
Oh, I mean, I forgive you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Hello, Dr. Van Con. Just for the record, Dr. Van Con, you have three, you have three minutes, and I'll wait you when you have about 15 seconds.
I was told I had 30 minutes.
30 minutes? No, no, remember, we're trying to minimize exposure and...
Are you kidding me? And I've been studying for hours on this.
Living meetings as much as possible.
It's wonderful seeing all of you again, Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm here, after a lot of thought, to say some words in favor of our city manager. First of all, I'd like to commend the behavior of the city council. I think it's been a great example to many of us in days of so much discord. I am one of those that feels that vigorous discussion is very important, and sometimes minorities can be just as important as majorities, and boards and councils switch at times. But it's always important to have vigorous discussion, to come up with what we think is the best idea. When I was on the school board many years ago, one time I had a brilliant idea and brought it up before the school board, and I was part of the majority back then. And I lost a very narrow vote on that, on that particular item. It was six to one against. And that was after I thought I had the most brilliant idea that had been ever brought up before the school board. So I know what it's like to lose. But what I'd like to, for you all to look at when you decide on the contract on Mr. Perez, is that look around at what we have in the city. The city has improved greatly. I think he's given the ability to open a lot of doors, especially in Austin. His professionalism is above reproach. And I think he is somebody that can represent the city very, very well without having to worry that he may embarrass the city in one way or another. I know that sometimes not all may get along as perfectly as we would like, but that's where discussion and chivalry comes in. And so I would just all ask that all of you please consider that Mr. Perez continue as city manager for as long a period of contractors can be given to him. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Van Con. And thank you for your efforts. I know we're working through this crisis right now, the COVID-19. And thank you for the medical community's efforts and what we're trying to do and manage and minimize the risk of the spread. So thank you for your efforts, and Dr. Vazquez as well, and all the medical communities. Appreciate it.
I enjoyed the talk on the radio yesterday. It was very professional on your behalf. And just a few seconds on that, as leaders, try to reassure the community, there are so many people that are scared to death right now. This thing has not appeared on our, at our community yet. It will, but it hasn't yet, and I think we're very well prepared to deal with it. And with every day that passes or temperatures get warmer, I firmly believe that the warmer it gets, and as sad as it is, the drier it gets, the better it is, the less survival potential for the virus. So we're getting to those days, or pretty soon, just because of nature, it's going to be more difficult for the virus to live. Hopefully, by that time, we will not have had too many cases, and we'll go through this okay. But it's important that you all, as individuals, reassure the public that you're in control. Nothing bad's happening right now.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Afternoon, Mayor. We have Gilbert Gettle in Westphal.
Gilbert Gettle. Why ain't you being...
Hello, Mr. Gettle? Hello, Mr. Gettle? Okay, hold on, you're going to keep on speaking.
Hello, Mr. Gettle?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good evening. Just for the record, we have three minutes for the conversation, right about 15 seconds prior to it expires, I'll let you know. Go ahead.
That's fine.
Go ahead, you can start now.
Do you need me to present the project?
What's that?
Do you need me to present the project at this point?
Well, okay, wait a minute. Are you here for open forum, or are we talking about a project?
Well, I believe, well, I'm here for item, it's a...
Does that have you under 7D item?
Oh, are we, well, okay, I guess, I thought we were at 4A, but who is in the audience? At which time are we on now, sir?
Okay, right now, we're under public forum, item 7D. People are here under public forum for item 7D. As per this, so are we here for the project, or are we here for the 7D?
I'm here for both, or let me proceed with 7B. I just wanted to let you all know that I fully support the council if it would so choose to extend Mr. Perez's contract. The past few years that he's been there, I've seen a tremendous amount of improvement in city operations at the facilities, most of all. We've made good progress with TCQ violations that the city has been encumbered with for quite a few years now. Nothing was going on, they were just being passed on down, the cam was being kicked down the road, so to speak, under Mr. Perez's tutelage. I mean, and then, of course, he hired Stephen, but, you know, all these issues have been met head-on and are being taken care of and getting rid of. So if I could put in my two cents worth of support for him, and for whatever it's worth, I would fully support the council if they would so decide to extend his contract. I know that puts up on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Gettle. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And we'll come back with the other item, I suppose, later on.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hollis, how are you, sir?
Oh, hey. Wonderful. Unfortunately, under these circumstances, we all have to be very careful and I applaud your cautious.
For the record, just, we have three minutes for public forum at this time. You're here for item seven D? Or are you here for a different?
Well, a combination.
Okay, so let's start with seven D and then we'll come back to the other item.
Okay, good. Thank you. For the record, my name is Hollis Rutledge and I'm here to talk to you about the tremendous efforts that we have been able to develop successfully on behalf of the citizens of Rio Grande City and this council. Had it not been for the result of the audits that were finally approved and completed, we would not be where we are today. There were a lot of stagnation because of that. We all know that. And I applaud your city manager in having had foresight to make that happen. As a result, I can tell you that we have accomplished quite a bit ever since we've been engaged by you all in conjunction with Mr. Perez in excess of $4 million that we've been able to acquire for the city of Rio Grande City and more to come. We have some items on the agenda, resolutions for, that you all will consider this evening, resolutions for item A and item B relative to continuing our efforts in identifying those successful grants that we're, have been able to obtain. The border zone is one. We've already obtained it. This is a cursory deal that we're doing now for accepting it through a resolution. But I would like to say that I've had a tremendous respect for your city manager and his professionalism. And boy, he does put us to task. And I will say that we've been having, have quite a bit of success because we've been working together in tandem to be able to secure the funds that we have. As you know, you're only as good as a team that you have. I borrow from Ronald Reagan, which I worked for, when he said, had it not been for the type of cabinet members that he had that were smarter than he was, because I was in that room, it would not be able to have accomplished his being able to make the decisions on behalf of the American people. So teamwork is very important. And I applaud your all's selection originally in that of Mr. Perez. And I have the utmost respect for the professionalism that we've had over the years in accomplishing what is good and for the citizens of Rio Grande City. And I have, for recap, my associate Frankie, that will give you a little synopsis of some of the things that we're working on right now.
Yes, moving on to, you're going to discuss items three A and three B at this point?
Yes.
Well, since we're already here, let's discuss, I mean, just, we're trying to limit the, right, as far as space here, but since they're separate items, let's go ahead and do that. Yes. For item three A and three B? Yes, sir.
We got about ten minutes here. When it's ready, we'll print the emergency meetings. You can put it on Facebook online and they can post it.
Okay. Can we do that? Let's post it.
It's ready to print. Just print it and sign it. It's in your, yeah, and that way you can have it in a day.
Perfect. Good.
Which item we're going to make?
And they were here to talk also about item three A and three B, which are the grants that we're applying for. Now we're going to have to come back later and as we move through the items, so go ahead.
Good afternoon. Frank San Martin with Hollis Rutledge and Associates. I know the fire chief will, will be able to answer more questions about the resolutions, but we were able to secure $64,000 for the fire department. So the resolution is really just to formally accept the grant from the governor's office and is for some border zone fire equipment. That's item three A. And in item three B, we just submitted a grant to the AFG. It's the Federal Assistance for Firefighters Grant Program. It's for some equipment that the fire department needs. So we just, we're submitting, it's due on Friday. There goes an extension to that grant based on everything that's been going on. And we just wanted to let you guys know that we got it in. We worked with the chief and the city manager hand in hand and we're able to get all the information and submit it. So I know that resolution is just to officially also just submit that grant. So that's...
As many as we can submit, sir, the better.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and also going back to, we're working with USDA on a project for maybe the airport and also the fire and emergency response services or community facilities building with USDA. So the audit was really, it's key, pretty much USDA. We just had another client that they had everything ready. And unfortunately, they didn't have their audit ready and they can't, they can't get any funding just because it's not there. So we're really happy that the audits are in time and they're good to go and that we can pursue even additional funding in these coming, coming months. So that's it. That's all I have for right now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollis. Appreciate it. Who do we have?
That's it for item seven D. There's item seven, yeah, three D. Mr., do you want to call this? No, yes.
I have here Lupita, is it Lupita Trinidad?
Oh, I'm sorry. We have one more. I have one more.
Yeah, we have a video from the start.
Yeah, Mr. Sartor, I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Ken?
Display, but no, no voice, no volume.
I guess we... You interpret what you want him to say.
Is it recorded, pre-recorded, or is it live? All right. Can you wait outside, please, Mr. Perez? Thank you. While we address this.
All right, please.
Good afternoon, I'm Mayor, Commissioner, the City of Rondell. My name is, here, based on the company and the current president for the planning and zoning of the city of Rondell. I'm interested in Mr. Perez, Mr. Perez. He works closely with the Manhattan full-size project here. I have been done in the city, the thing that I like about working with Mr. Perez. If you don't allow it, I have a question without the other to answer. He served the city with a lot of projects that are on on right now and on for the past couple of years. Mr. Perez is from SFS, the City of Rondell. And I think the City of Rondell would be in good hands for the use of him if we stayed with him. Again, my name is Rondell and I started to recommend Mr. Perez.
Okay, so what do we have now? Is it this?
Lupita.
Okay.
Lupita Trinidad?
Yes, sir.
What do you have, Deanna Calabria here?
No, she wasn't able to, she's, she's on the radio, she's on.
We have a PowerPoint.
She sent a PowerPoint, but unfortunately she wasn't actually able to give it because of the lockdown on the radio, so.
Item three, which is discussion possible action, full resolution to approve and adopt the hazard mitigation plan, okay? Okay, Lupita Trinidad, they should... But again, let's limit the, please, here for ten. Okay, good. Come back then. Thank you. Item three E.
Oh, three E, okay.
All right, so anyone else signed up for public forum at this time? Anyone else besides this?
There was some people here, unfortunately, I guess, because we had restarted the meeting and I didn't want to add anyone, so. That's it. That we have signed in before the...
And what is it for?
It's the same, same item seventy.
Seventy? Okay, well, how many people are talking?
I'm right on the one C, A, B, and C, three nine, all of those were kind of presentation by our side. Those were reschedule other people, so I had to...
Okay, so items C, A, B, and C?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But continuing any?
We had the D, we're trying to answer, but he said that it's okay.
Okay. All right, so moving on at this time, item, just for the record, item one C. We don't have a public forum, A, B, and C at this time. And moving on to item one D, reading the proclamation, week of the young child. Item one D and this for proclamation purposes. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the South Texas College Child Development Department and the Child Development and Early Childhood Department are celebrating the week of the young child from April 11th through April 17th. Whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs that can provide a foundation of learning for children in Rio Grande City. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Rio Grande City deserve thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. Now therefore, I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Rio Grande City, Texas, do hereby proclaim April 11th, 2020, and through April 17th, 2020, as the week of the young child. In Rio Grande City, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children in our community and to ensure that all young children enjoy an early childhood that prepares them to take full advantage of their educational opportunities and to become effective citizens, capable workers, and loving parents of the next generation. Next item, one E, read and proclamation, bleeding disorders awareness month. Whereas the Federal Department of Health and Human Services has designated the month of March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And whereas in 2019, 25 states and 54 local governments passed a proclamation resolution declaring March as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. And whereas this designation will expand upon the designation 30 years ago, March 1986, by President Ronald Reagan as Hemophilia Awareness Month. And whereas bleeding disorder advocates during this month wear red scarves or ties. And whereas this month will generate greater awareness and understanding of not only hemophilia but all inheritable bleeding disorders, including Von Wilden Brand disease, which will alone impacts an estimated 1% of the United States population of more than 3.2 million individuals. And whereas the month will elevate awareness of and engagement in the inheritable bleeding disorders journey beyond our community to the general public, enabling the prevention of illness, unnecessary procedures, and disability. Now therefore, I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Rio Grande City, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month in Rio Grande City, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of individuals with inheritable bleeding disorders in our community. And in demonstrating our support for this important initiative, also wear red scarves, ties, or other pieces of red clothing to create greater awareness of inheritable bleeding disorders throughout the month of March. And at this point, Mr. Perez, department reports, anything that can wait on for, okay? Moving on, item two, consent agenda, A, approval of departmental travel request. Item two B, approval of minutes from previous meetings. And item two C, approval of action taken at the meeting of the Kelsey Bass Museum and Event Center Commission held on February 202020. You all have it in your package? Any, any discussion on any of these items or?
Sir, I'd like to add is that we'll be monitoring the situation. For example, if some folks from the criminal justice side, they will be doing some access in the court presence Dallas and so on and so forth. But I want to just consider that situation as a, as a...
And that was my question. I noticed, you know, April, early April, something already made, but that was my question, I guess, pending this.
Right, and typically the larger cities are going to take probably an action when there's an issue in their city. They're probably considering large families, justice classes.
And at this time, if there are things that we don't have to travel outside our region, then I would definitely recommend not to travel outside for this type, unless it's absolutely necessary or unless there are other ways to video in or conference in or access it from here. Let's use technology to avoid the face-to-face as much as possible. Obviously, there are times that we're not going to be able to do that, but when we can, let's see what we can do. So let's, let's keep that pending. Anything else on there, Commissioners?
I'm all the way for the consent agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza. Second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, business and orders, item three, resolutions. Letter A, discussion and possible action to approve. Yes, we already addressed A and B, which is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-5 to authorize the submission of a grant for funding through the Homeland Security Grant Division, FY 2020 border zone fire department grant. And letter three B, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-6 to authorize the submission of a grant for funding through the AFG Assistance to Firefighter Grant. And Hollis and Associates already discussed both items. This time we'll take both to consideration.
I approve items three and three B.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items three A and three B by Commissioner Ramirez. Second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item three C, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-7 to authorize the submission of a grant for funding through the Violence Against Women Formula Grants Program. Item three C. Chief, come on in. Assistant Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
This grant we're applying is through the VAALA grant, which is the Violence Against Women Formula Grant. This grant would allow our department to actually hire detective to handle all crimes, violent crimes against women, including the ages between 11 years old and above for males as well. Right now, the investigators we currently have handle any case that comes across their desk. With this grant, it would allow our department to mainly focus that detective on those types of cases while the other detectives focus on the rest of the crimes. Yes. Right now, we do have the crime victim's liaison, so they would work hand in hand. Any cases that he or she comes across, that's where our crime victim liaison would take over and help him out through the process after the investigation is done. We are applying for this grant. It's $50,832 with 15 cents. That includes salary and training. There is a cash match of 30%, which would come out to $21,785 and 21 cents.
This would be a one-year grant?
It's a one-year grant. Normal new grants, they only allow it for a year. After a while, you'll be able to apply for two-year grants.
Any further discussion or do you have a motion to?
No, I saw one, and we approved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ramirez. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Garza. Second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, motion carries. Next, thank you, chief. Next, item three D.
The next grant is the same.
Discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-eight to authorize the submission of a grant for funding the local border security grant, Border Star. And it's very similar as far as the grant or?
This grant is a continuous grant, we've been running about nine years with it. It allows border security over time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries, thank you, chief.
Mayor, if I may suggest, we got Mr. Tejirina that drove from out of town for item J.
Which item?
J.
Three J?
Is it possible we can move on?
Okay, we have a, well, actually, if no one objects, we can move to item three J at this time. No objection? Alright, moving on to item three J. Anyone else in that position, Mr. Perez, that drove from out of town or anything? Then we can.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and staff, for the record. Robert Tejirina with Tejirina Galvano Lawrence, we are the city's financial advisor. I did hand out a presentation, and it's a plan of finance for a certificate obligation. This is the first step on the city's potential projects to finance them over a certain timeframe. This does not require a bond election or voter approval. So if I can, right before that, a lot has happened from the last time I was here, in say, October or so till now. First of all, congratulations on getting your audit done. You know, I know over the years, it's been a hard fought item, it's been done. And two, several other things there, you've increased your fund balance, and I kind of wrote these notes down. You've increased your fund balance by six hundred and thirteen thousand. You decreased your deficit by nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. You decreased your expenses by three hundred and ninety-seven thousand and increased your revenues five hundred and forty-four thousand. All those things took place when you set your budget back in the summer of two thousand eighteen. Is that my cue to wrap it up?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, I should have asked first, do I have a time limit? But those are important things that were established and set by the commission, working with your staff, the city manager, the finance director, back in the summer of two thousand eighteen. It all transpired in the fiscal year ending two thousand nineteen audit. You've also added a fund balance policy, which has never been added before, that you only have three months minimum worth of expenses set aside as a savings, a minimum of that. You also added an investment policy, which wasn't done before. These are things go hand in hand and working as a group, as elected officials, and working with your staff. Again, the city manager, finance director, and what has happened over the last few years, you exactly done what you said you were going to do. You're getting better every single year from the prior year. You're better in two thousand nineteen versus eighteen, and eighteen, you're better in seventeen. Now, everything's fallen into place to what the city manager, Mr. Perez, and what Mr. Conthu talked to the rating companies last year, that's all transpired. The rating agencies look at your solid A as a bond rating. They look to see what has happened in the past, what is it doing right now, what's proposed in the future. Everything I touched on, and including the refunding that you did, where you saved on over two point two million dollars last year. So these are things that the rating company sees is the elected officials, the governing body, are they working hand in hand alongside with the staff? Those are key things that shows them they're going hand in hand and doing exactly what they said they were going to do in eighteen. Increase revenues, decrease expenses, decrease the deficit, add to our fund balance, all key major components. Now, to get to the presentation, on the first page, case A, these are listed projects that were provided by the staff, and it ranges, again, on this page, general fund balance, which is the interest and sinking fund tax rate. Your INS tax rate, where it'd be supporting those projects, and it ranged from a fire truck all the way down to, and I apologize, we left that blank on the very bottom of the general fund column, six million one sixty, that is the police and fire building for six million one sixty. And we highlighted the B and G Club Building, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, because those two on the next page will be removed. But those are the projects on the general fund, which will be supported by your INS tax rate. Below that, we have the EDC projects totaling three million one forty-two. The INS tax rate projects are totaling thirteen million sixty-eight thousand. And then you have the PUD, the Public Utility Department, Rattler Drive Utilities totaling two hundred and ninety-five thousand seven thirty-three and thirty-four cents for a total projects of sixteen million five oh six seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. So that's case A. Now, what we did, yes?
Some of these, for the EDC part, are reimbursements. So if you look at the Rattler Drive, for example, this is money that we're using right now, these would be reimbursed back. We talked about this at the.
Sure. Yeah, my only question is on the police department, there was six point one million. Where did we get those numbers from?
From. We got together with both chiefs and asked for the approximate square footage. The reason it's extremely high is because it's considered a commercial-grade building. And so they're supposed to be able to sustain the higher wings. So if there's a natural disaster coming through, hurricane, tornado, whatever, they're supposed to be still standing. And that's why, that's the, it's the same thing, the square footage cost, I can't remember, but it's extremely high, it's not normal, it's not like.
Accommodation, the police department and fire department, building?
It's a safety building.
Safety building.
Safety building.
Yes, sir, and then we highlighted those two. Because if you go to the next page on case B, the only difference is we removed those two items on the INS side to minimize any potential tax rate increase on the community, on the interest and sinking fund side. So we removed those two from there, giving the general fund slash interest and sinking fund tax rate funding six million one hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. So pretty much a little over half of that is coming, again, from the Boys and Girls Club and the Police and Fire Department. So we removed those two, so that's the difference. So the total amount on case B is financing nine million at the very bottom, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, sixty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-seven cents. The average life we put in here ranges anywhere from ten years to fifteen years, possibly twenty-five years. And what we did is just finance pretty much everything over twenty years, but we show a payoff period to meet the average life. We don't want to finance something twenty years when it only goes out ten or fifteen. So we took those projects and financed them accordingly to where they get paid off within the timeframe.
By when do we have to have set as far as the actual projects that we want? For example, let's say we want to go back and change some of these here.
Okay, if you go back to, on case A, the main topics and the main key things on case A versus case B are those two, the Boys and Girls Club and the Police and Fire Department. Because what you approve on the notice of intent, and the notice of intent is part of this action item, is going to be published in the local newspaper. So, for example, we don't want to go with case B if we know we're going to do the Boys and Girls Club and the Police and Fire. We don't want to go with case A if we know we're not going to do the Boys and Girls Club or the Police and Fire. So those are the two main components that are part of that notice of intent. Because whatever gets published there, it's kind of an agreement with the community saying, this is what we're going to do. The language that is written by bond counsel on this notice of intent is very broad. It covers a lot of fire equipment, city equipment, vehicles, curb gutter, drainage, very broad language that covers anything that the EDC has and everything, pretty much that the general fund INS covers. Rattlers, utilities, it covers all of that. The main two key parts are those building facilities. So that has to be identified, saying we're going to build a recreation facility and a building for police and fire. So once it gets approved, those are the projects that we're going to move forward with and finance. So we don't want to go out and do case A and then all of a sudden say, we don't want to do the police and fire, and we don't want to do the Boys and Girls Club. You can move forward with them if it comes back, like Commissioner Ramirez is saying, what is the cost? What's the square footage? If y'all guys come back and say, well, we want to make it downsized, make it a little smaller, and I'm just throwing something out there, if it's a one-story, let's make it a two-story on both projects. It makes less concrete that they have to pour, downsize, re-modify the interior. Those are things that you could do with case A, but instead of coming back seven million dollars, it comes back five million dollars. By posting the notice of intent and including those projects in there, you can still move forward with it. But the day that we sell the bonds, we don't have to sell sixteen million five, we sell fourteen. So the dollar amount is going to be stated in the notice of intent, which, scenarios approved. What that dollar amount states is we cannot exceed that amount. We can't publish that we're going to do, and we round it up, seventeen million dollars. We can't go out there and sell seventeen million thousand dollars, nothing over that. We can sell five million or ten million, say we get a bargain or somebody gives an existing building in the city, all you got to do is renovate it, fix it up. So those are things, the dollar amount, we cannot exceed it, but we can come under it on either one of the scenarios.
Okay, so just to be clear, as far as publication of the intent, we're going to be, let's say we pass, okay?
Yes, sir.
Now would be publication, and the publication is going to include what, just so I can be clear? It's going to include, this is what we're doing, and it's going to include case A and case B, or we would have to agree today?
You would have to decide which scenario you want to go with. Case A or case B, if you want to move forward and publish the notice of intent next week. It'd be either one of those. And again, those projects is, say, we don't need as many vehicles. It's still stated that you're going to buy vehicles, instead of getting three, you only need one. And I'm just giving examples out there. But again, you'd have to go with either one of the scenarios. If you know that you can get those buildings at a lower cost, then you go with case A, knowing you're going to build those and knowing it's going to come in cheaper. And we now know it's going to be less than what we stated here in the dollar amount. But we're still going to move forward and publish that, but when the day the bonds are sold, have a better number, architect comes in, a construction guy comes in, he says, no, we could do that for five million dollars. We know we're going to sell two million less. But again, going with case B, the only difference is those two main projects on the general fund side, the police and fire department building and the Boys and Girls Club building.
You touched on the importance of deciding on any construction, any major construction. Right now is the best time to do it, because if you wait six months, twelve months from now, costs are going to go up. Once we come out of this, costs are going to go up. No matter what you do, as long as you delay your decision on doing a building of any size, doesn't matter what size you decided. Whether you do a safety building that's half the size or triple the size, whatever, the cost of building materials is going to go up maybe or so.
The cost in construction, I gave one example earlier, school district, even though it's a school district, they added a wing to their elementary school. We did a financing for one point eight, the project was one point eight million. They used eight hundred thousand from the fund balance, and we assisted them on borrowing a million dollars. That was September, early October, the bids came in in February, early February. That one point eight million dollar project was six hundred thousand over. Just on the construction, the labor, everything added in, six hundred thousand over. So instead of going out there and doing another short-term financing, they added other projects and called a bond election and added that additional amount in that referendum for this coming May. Cost of construction, and we hired my brother-in-law, who retired from the Texas Water Development Board Effective, he started working with us January first. It doesn't matter if it's a building, if it's water and sewer projects, you have your utility director could tell you the same thing, you have the water and sewer projects also have a contingency amount, just in case, eight to ten percent. Those are coming above and beyond what people normally expect. Those projects are also increasing. We know the interest rates that we have right now, everybody sees it, the stock market is down, interest rates are zero point two five percent. That has been the only constant for the last several years, interest rates are down low. And that is what the fact is, right now, interest rates are down low. But the cost of construction, water, sewer, paving, whatever it is, that over the years has just gradually gone up. So whatever is a million dollars now, you may add ten percent next year to it, add twenty percent if you're going to do it two years from now. So that's one thing that's consistent. Interest rate exposure by either doing something, we know interest rates were a little lower last week, they're a little higher this week. They have no pressure right now to go any lower, the only pressure that interest rates have is to continue to go back up. So again, financing is extremely low now. The city was very fortunate, you did a seven point five million dollar Water Development Board application. You received a grant loan forgiveness on two million of that seven point five million dollar project. The interest rate that you got, we updated it about a week ago for the Water Development Board, one point three percent on a thirty-year financing with the Texas Water Development Board. Interest rates are low, it's when the cost comes in for those projects, will it still be seven point five? When you finally go out and get the bid, so it doesn't discriminate whether it's a building for a city or a school district, or if it's paving, curb gutter, ditches, drainage, water and sewer, that has just constantly been going up. So again, if there's an opportunity to move forward with something, the cost of barn is extremely low. It's avoiding the delay of moving, pushing something back out a year. What is it going to cost us here from now, where interest rate's going to be a year from now? So again, Mayor, the only difference is those two major buildings, because we identified them, they have to be identified, that it's a new construction, so that's why we took them out, they're the bulk of the INS tax rate. And so if you get on the next page, page three of seven, and we highlight it in yellow, we have the pre-amount, the INS tax rate, interest and sinking fund tax rate. Commission has done a great job of having the utility system support the utility system debt. Cities this size and smaller don't have that luxury, even a little larger, to always say water and sewer, you take care of water and sewer. You normally have water and sewer taking care of other projects, other financings, but here you have it separate. So the INS tax rate is one of the lowest in the community, and especially probably one of the lowest, if not the lowest, for a community this size. Seven point two six cents, and we have a drop. The refunding that you did last year, the refunding that you did last year, we're showing another tax rate decrease because a portion of that debt was supported by the INS tax rate. Because you did the refinancing and saved about a hundred and ten thousand dollars for next fiscal year, you drop about two point two nine cents. So again, case A, we finance about sixteen million five hundred and ten thousand. We have an INS tax rate of twenty-five seventy-five, that's an increase of sixteen point two cents. That's if the INS tax rate supports all the general fund projects. And on this case, case A, it includes the Boys and Girls Club Building and the Police and the Fire Departments, the buildings. So that's an increase of sixteen point two cents, so you go from seven point two six to twenty-five point seven cents. Case B, we remove those two projects. You finance nine million five hundred and sixty-five thousand. INS tax rate goes from seven point two six cents to fifteen point nine, two cents, an increase of six point three seven cents. That is what we're looking at, again, an increase there for next fiscal year. What we didn't show in the scenarios, if you turn to the next page. What we didn't show in the scenarios, if you turn to the next page, on the top right-hand corner, it's, uh, pre in red, and at the bottom, it's page four of seven, we have property values on column B. The city is averaging a property value growth of about three point seven percent. Your property value six years ago was four hundred and eleven million roughly, right now you're, uh, four hundred and seventeen million, now you're five hundred and eleven million. So, six years ago to now, you've grown about twenty-two, almost twenty-three percent. So, about three point seven growth, three point seven percent growth a year. On column C, we show no property value growth. We're conservative there, we don't know what the appraisal va- value's gonna be, and next month when they give you the indications, much less what's it gonna be in July when it's final and certified. So, we show no growth there, and we all know, if the valuation goes up, INS tax rate comes down. And the flip side of the property values go down, the INS tax rate has to come up. So, here, no growth, and we have the debt on column D, principal and interest. Column G, we show the self-supporting debt, which is coming from the utility system, roughly one point three million, all the way down till fiscal year thirty-one, then it drops to about a million, then it goes to about eight hundred and seventy thousand. That is the utility system supporting the bulk of the debt that you have outstanding right now with the Tox- Texas Water Development Board. The INS tax rate is, uh, currently, uh, and I take that back, currently at nine point five five cents for this current fiscal year, that's on column L. And on column K, the INS is supporting that nine point five five cents, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, and you have a drop, because you did that refunding, it goes from nine point five five cents to seven point two six cents. The two point two nine cents on column M, that is because, again, you did that refunding in the fall, you saved a hundred and ten thousand dollars for next fiscal year. So, that's the reason from the drop. So, if nothing happens in the next few months, you come budget time, you get into no debt, you do no financings. Based on what we show on column G, your INS tax rate is gonna go from nine point five five cents to seven point two six cents, and especially if your property values remain the same. So, that's the situation right now, if no financing occurs between now and the end of the fiscal year. Your INS tax rate's looking to drop unless something happens to column B, and unless you adjust column G, which is supported from the utility system. So, if you turn to the next page on case A, we kept, uh, columns B, C, and D the same, and what we did on column E, we financed the, the sixteen million, uh, five hundred and ten thousand dollars to do all the projects. Again, including the, the Boys and Girls Club and the Police and Fire Buildings. The interest rate, we assumed a financing in June of three percent. If we're in the market, last week, we'd actually be closer to two point one zero percent for a twenty-year financing. So, we added ninety basis points, not knowing what's gonna happen between now and pricing date in June, so we were conservative there. So, your principal and interest payments are about a million four hundred and forty-five thousand, all the way down until two thousand and thirty-six, which is row one twenty-six, and then we gradually, uh, drop it, uh, a little bit, and then drop it again mainly in two thousand and thirty-nine and forty. That is the full amount being financed over twenty years. Now, here on column G stays the same as the prior page. Column H, those are the EDC projects. That column H is gonna be three million one hundred forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. The EDC is gonna support that payment of roughly two hundred and thirty dollars, two hundred and thirty thousand a year. There'll be an interlocal agreement between the EDC and the commission, the city commission, to where they agree to pay back two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for borrowing that amount under your name, so they'll finance that, the full amount, two hundred and thirty thousand, uh, over two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and thirty-eight. The next column, on column I, that is the PUD, the Public Utility Department Projects, two hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars on column I, they're gonna help pay about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand average a year. Those amounts are negative, and the reason of it is 'cause it's coming from another source and not your interest and sinking fund tax rate. We left column I blank, and we left, we put nothing in column, uh, uh, sorry, column J, issuer contribution. We show the general fund INS portion, supported by the INS tax rate, and it's an increase of sixteen point two cents on column M, and you'll see the impact on column L, goes from nine point five five cents to twenty-five point seven five cents, an increase of sixteen point two. What, the amount that you put on column J, if you want the general fund to help support the debt and not impact the INS tax rate as much, there'll be an amount on column J. The general fund can have a transfer to help pay for the debt, the utility system can help pay for this debt. We can also adjust the payments here to where we can have smaller principal payments, and what we did is make it level, pretty much have the same payment every year for the majority of the twenty years, and then it drops the last couple of years. We can adjust to have smaller principal payments the first few years, so your payments on the front end are lower, so you can have gradual increases on the INS tax rate. We can add in a percentage growth on property values, if you feel comfortable that the property values are gonna continue to grow, we can use one to two percent. And again, column J is left blank. For example, if you wanted to do all the projects on case A, and you didn't wanna increase sixteen point two cents, you wanted to make it six point two cents. On column J, we would need to see an amount in there from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and thirty, roughly four hundred and eighty-one thousand. That's ten cents equivalent, so we lowered it from sixteen point two cent increase to six point two. So, four hundred and eighty thousand for-
Mr. Tejina, obviously, there's a lot of information, and, uh, for the sake of continuing the meeting, what do you suggest us to do at this point? Because this is something we're gonna have to come back and really specifically target this, and look at all these numbers that, that you're addressing, and how to make sure that it's in the best interest of the city, the finances. At this point, what's the recommendation, Mr. Perez?
If you want to, um, dive into the nuts and bolts-
Yes.
We recommend we have a workshop just for this item, because it's gonna take two to be out.
Okay, 'cause that, we're gonna have to do that, just to make sure that we get into the-
More informed decision.
I agree, more informed decision, because a lot of information here. Make sure we don't put a burden on the city or taxpayers as well, but, uh, we do want all these projects, since it's, I think it's, uh, we've been doing a lot of great things, but some of these projects have been delayed because, again, there's other, there's always other needs.
Right.
Uh, but again, I think that workshop would be great, Mr. Perez, and we can say to the rest of our new future.
Timing would be of the essence, because-
Absolutely.
-the longer you wait, so in the next two weeks, three weeks, whatever, with everybody's agreement, we can schedule a workshop and say, "Hey, we're gonna need two hours of your time." But, what would you guess it'd be?
Yeah, at, at least a minimum of two hours.
Okay.
A minimum of two hours, at least to go over that, prioritize which projects, and I agree, you don't wanna rush into this, even though it's an action item, it's a lot of information, and we discussed that, Mr. Cantu and I discussed that last week, and if y'all are ready, then make it an action item, but there's always time to pull off the gas pedal, let's not move forward with it yet. At least two hours to talk about it, prioritize on what projects, do we really need to get better numbers, solid numbers, even more on the buildings, if that's where you wanna move forward to and build those, uh, building facilities? But, absolutely, e- even, any commitment, Mayor and Commissioners, whichever amount you go with, even smaller. If you're gonna rely on the INS tax rate, you've already risen out of the ashes, you got the bond rating back, you got the audit in place, everything looks fantastic for the city. We applaud staff, we applaud the city commission moving forward. If there's a commitment to have that INS tax rate come up, and you move forward with the debt, come budget time, this summer or even next summer, have that commitment there, and, again, not rely on the utility system or general fund transfer. If you can hit, if you could use the INS tax rate, use the INS tax rate, and if you don't wanna have it that large, cut back on the projects.
Let's, uh, let's plan for a workshop and just dive in for this item, and look at all the nuts and bolts, and how we can make a, uh, 'cause it look, I mean, obviously, it's great information, and it's something that we need to, to dive into, um, be more, um, I guess looking at thoroughly as we're gonna make this decision. But, this time, um, what the recommendation be, or what would the motion be at this time?
No action.
Table, table at this point?
Absolutely.
Make a motion at this time?
Mayor, make a motion to table this item.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Tejina, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's plan for that workshop, so we call it in, what we need to do, and let's get, dive into, because this is excellent, the financials look great, our financials look great, so-
Absolutely.
Let's, uh, make sure we, we, uh, look at this thoroughly and, uh, plan for, for this, uh, future and progress and prosperity, projects and so on, so, thank you, Mr. Tejina.
I appreciate Mayor Commission for the opportunity, I hope everybody be safe, and wish everybody the best. Thank you so much, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Betterations.
Three, item three E, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-nine to approve and adopt the City of Rio Grande City's Hazard Mitigation Plan, item three E. Hello, Ms. Vias.
Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor.
Hello.
With me is Lupita Tejina, the South Texas General Counsel. Over the past few years, we've been working with Stark County, City of Roma, uh, School of Roma, uh, School District, and, uh, Scovades to come up with a regional plan, and, um, I'm gonna later introduce the process that we went through, and how this plan has now been approved by state and federal. Go ahead, Ms. Vias.
Good afternoon, Council. Um, um, you may not recall, 'cause this was about three years ago, we met in hoping to apply for a grant to develop the Stark County Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Plan, this was about three years ago. Um, we took, they took a year to fund us for the planning grant, and planning developed, started development in about May, June of twenty, uh, seventeen. Uh, we finished plan development last year, however, state and FEMA review does take a while, just FEMA review takes six months. We received confirmation earlier this month that FEMA has approved the Stark County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and which the City of Rio Grande is part of. Uh, this plan is going to open a lot of doors for possible mitigation funds for natural disasters. Um, prior to this, you were not eligible to apply because you didn't have a mitigation plan. Now you do, it's approved, pending adoption, which means that after you adopt, if any entity in this plan adopts, we send those adoption resolutions to FEMA, and you now have an approved plan, which means you are eligible for available mitigation funding.
And we, Mr. Perez, Chief, have you looked at this plan, are we, everything looking-
Yes. He drafted the early ones for the first time in the year in Roma, and so it involved the input from all the different entities, and so we've been in the process of developing this stage.
So, not only is there subject matter experts within your community input in this plan, there was community, um, outreach events in, uh, in your city, one particularly in January of twenty eighteen, where we reached out to the community for any input on this plan, or their concerns, or any questions they had on this, and this was back in January of twenty eighteen. And last year, we also had, um, the city, or every jurisdiction post this plan for any stakeholder or community input on the draft phase.
Our event was at the South Texas, uh, auditorium, South Texas Polygamies, I know, uh, you went in there, and several of the Commissioners were there.
Any other comments on this? Chief, anything else? No? All right. Entertain a motion at this time, or any other question?
Yes, I saw one to approve.
Have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-nine by Commissioner Ramirez.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vias. Our next item is item three F, discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-ten to approve and adopt the fund balance policy.
Mayor, the, uh, next three, they're all policies related to, uh, the, uh, financing part of what we do with the, uh, with Mr. Cantu.
Okay.
And so, all of it were developed based on findings, or recommendations that they made when we were talking to standard investors. Do you have any of these policies in place? Uh, for example, we can start with the first one.
Okay, just for the record, we're considering, considering items three F, three G, and three H at this time, which are discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-ten to approve and adopt the fund balance policy, item three G, discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty-eleven to approve and adopt the investment policy, and item three H, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty- twelve to approve and adopt the grant management policy and procedures.
Right, all these policies have been reviewed by Mr. Cantu myself and Mr. Tejina along the way we asked for his input. The key item in the fund balance, for example, if you go to page three, um, we're looking for a three-month table of commitment. So, this basically says that you, as a committee of the S U S and Mayor, are committed-
Are you on the first item?
Yes, I'm on the, um, fund balance policy. You go to page three of the fund balance policy, the upper part of the eighth, second sentence there, says the city of Rio Grande City will want to take a fund balance equal to three months' fee. So, this is a commitment from you, as a Commissioner and Mayor, that we're gonna stick to this, and we wanna make sure that we're gonna continue to have this fund balance at a minimum.
At a minimum.
You can do more, you can do better, but at a minimum, you're gonna stick to maintaining that, so we're committing, uh, that we're gonna stick to it, and this will be looked upon and really make sure that we're maintaining.
Which is part of our, uh, A-bond grading and improving those, those standards that we're setting as we're moving forward, that we're actually committing to a certain level of, of balance, uh, at least to that, to that level, and then, of course, more if, if we can at that point, okay?
Yes, sir. Then you're followed by the investment policy, uh, basically, uh, the policy itself is, is kinda outlining that, uh, both Mr. Cantu and I will be attending some training, uh, to make sure that every investment that we make is a sound investment, that there's a safety and the risk factors are considered, and that we're just not going out there and investing. Of course, everything will be run by you before we go and do a major investment, but the basics, you know, you know, once you authorize, that you don't go out there and do something that's not good, okay? And so, the trading will be involved and all that, and review process, and basically, all these are sound investment policies that, uh, have been adopted by other cities, so we can go out there and create a new ones. This is coming from Mr. Tejina and company, they review it closely, and we're not going out there and doing something different than no one else has done. Uh, we're not overreacting ourselves, we're not committing anything, it's just that the rules that we're gonna engage in whenever we consider any foreign investment. The reason sometimes you have to authorize is if there's a change in the, in the financial markets, and, uh, you can always say, "Hey, we wanna make sure we're not losing money, and we have made sound decisions, something has to be decided." Of course, we'll be checking in with you before we do anything, but we wanna make sure we have a policy that we follow, and we don't go out there and do something crazy. That's an investment policy. The grant policy, very similar, we never had a grant policy, this is basically setting some standards out there by having a policy we can follow for a farm, for a keeping of the grain.
Yep.
Very similar, it's just basically standardizing things, and we can show you some of the power.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions, or?
You wanna take them all together, Mayor?
Yes, if we could take all three items.
It's not part of, uh, of, uh, object, the discussion is gonna do it?
No.
We can take action on these?
Yes.
Okay, I saw one.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Garza to approve items three F, three G, and three H.
I'll take the motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Am I opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item is item three I, discussion and possible action to approve resolution twenty twenty- thirteen, authorizing the city manager to close certain accounts in Lone Star National Bank and transferring account balance to corresponding accounts in Lone Star National Bank.
Commissioner, Mayor, uh, this is just basically how we keep it, we have an account set up with sanitation department, we're not using it, there's no need to have it, and it's just an account that still have to open. Uh, there's, uh, since then, we've done some additional research, so we'll probably be producing a couple of other accounts that are not being used at this time, we don't have any at this time, we just, to let you hear your heads up, we have additional accounts, we're just getting house on the account side at the minute.
Would there be money, would there be money in those accounts?
No.
No?
Have a motion to approve item three I by Commissioner Garza. Have a motion to approve item three I by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, all those in, in, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item is four, Planning Letter A, discussion and possible action on final approval of Rosalva Cortez subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, we have a Rosalvo Cortez subdivision for final approval. This particular subdivision went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, the, the past meeting, the staff and, and, and the, the planning director recommended approval, all these specs have been completed, so it's good to go.
No issues there, Mr. Milan, anything there?
No, sir.
Alright, this time, do we, any other questions?
Where, where is this one located, next to?
That one is, is in seventy-five country states.
And this is a final approval?
Yes.
Yeah, and planning and zoning is already, we took care of this, and they're...
Recommended, ready?
Recommended it, moving on to item four A. It's a motion by Commissioner Garza to approve item four A.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Item approved. Next item is four B, discussion and possible action on preliminary and final approval of the re-subdivision of lots two, three out of Plaza del Mar subdivision, item four B.
Okay, Mayor, this particular subdivision, it had been subdivided sometime back, and what we're doing, we're combining lots two and three into one, our client needed more space, and, and that's why they decided to just combine the lots, that's why we're asking for preliminary and final, within the meeting, this particular subdivision as well was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in the past meeting, and it got recommended approval.
I saw movement, approve?
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four B by Commissioner Ramirez, second by Commissioner Garza, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, item four C, discussion and possible action to, on preliminary approval of the Loma Hill Commercial Subdivision, item four C.
On, on this one, Mayor, this particular subdivision, it's out of the city limits, but within the one mile ATJ, that's why we're presenting it, this subdivision is for commercial purposes, and it's located at the intersection of Embassy and Doria Street, right now, this particular development consists of eight commercial lots, our client, Mr. Clark, he's gonna be doing all the improvements on, along Embassy, so all the frontage of, of the street is gonna be improved.
Is that the property on the corner where they cleaned, cleaned it out and?
That's correct.
Kinda leveled it out a little bit?
Yes, sir. So, as part of the requirement for this development, our client was only supposed to improve half of the street, but he decided to go ahead and pave the full section, so right now, it's not in the city, but it's almost within city limits, and, and he's gonna be improving the whole section, so we're gonna have a pretty good section there, a street section, pretty, pretty soon. And this is just for preliminary purposes.
And it's all gonna be commercial?
Yes, sir, the first eight lots are gonna be for commercial, he purchased forty lots, so the, there's gonna be about forty, thirty-seven lots, thirty-seven acres for residential purposes in the future.
That runoff, that's the, the street, the runoff on that street, gonna need a lot of work.
Yeah, on that one, what we're proposing on our construction plans, we're gonna be putting a, I believe it's a four-feet valley gutter on the east end of the street to, to com, I guess, to alleviate the erosion problem that is ongoing in there, so once the street is paved and, and we install that concrete apron, we shouldn't have those issues.
Very good. I saw movement.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four C by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item is four D, discussion and possible action on variance request, approval and subdivision requirement for the Ramirez Brothers subdivision, item four D.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, this is a, actually, the next item on the agenda is the same subdivision, it's a two-lot residential subdivision, however, originally, part of the requirements was to have two cul-de-sacs, however, after, even though Planning and Zoning recommended approval, there can be no action due to he actually complies with the subdivision requirements, a distance for a requirement for a cul-de-sac is over three hundred and fifty? Three hundred and thirty feet? And this is what, two hundred and?
Two fifty.
Two fifty, so it's actually good, there's no action needed on this item.
Okay, say that again, just to make, then why do we have it on the item, on the agenda there?
Yes, because it was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
However, further research on subdivision requirements, we found out that the cul-de-sac is not needed, so therefore, he did not need to ask for a variance on this item.
Okay, so there's no need for a variance in that regard at this point, based on your research and?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so no, no action, I mean, on item, no action on item four D. Next, Business and Orders, item four E, discussion and possible action on preliminary approval of the Ramirez, no, no, that was, already did that one. Next, four F, discussion and possible action on wine and beer retailers permit? Okay, my mistake, discussion and possible action on preliminary, preliminary approval of the Ramirez Brothers subdivision, which is item four E.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this is that two-lot residential subdivision, again, the utilities are there, there's water and service, both serviced by the City of Rio Grande, this is on the Stone Gate area subdivision.
And it was approved by Planning and Zoning, and no issues there? Alright, any other questions, or entertain a motion? Okay, have a motion to approve item four E by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next item, four F, discussion and possible action on wine and beer retailers permit by Tejano Mart, for the, the, located at nine hundred East Second Street, Rio Grande City, Stark County, Texas.
Yes, Mayor, this is the, the Tejano Mart that is currently closed across the Fire Department, both Tejano Marts have been purchased, and they're gonna reopen them, they're gonna remodel them, they're gonna look nice, new owners.
Both of them, you said?
Yes, both of them, yes, sir.
Who's the owner?
Well, he's got a name, I cannot say, but...
No, that's fine. But it's, but both of them are gonna be open for business again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, excellent.
No issue with the KBC or?
No, the, the owners, and again, this, this are sites that have been previously licensed by the city and state.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item four F by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, who carries it, and I'm assuming is item G as well, which is discussion and possible action on wine and beer retailers permit by Tejano Mart for loc, store located at fifty-two seventy East Highway eighty-three, Rio Grande City, Texas.
That's correct, Mayor, this, the Tejano Mart right here by our office, not too far away, again, same deal, they've been purchased, they're gonna reopen and remodel, et cetera, and this is for liquor licenses.
Moving on, I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza, have a second by Commissioner Ramirez, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Milan.
Thank you.
Item five, City Manager's Report, Letter A.
This is, Mayor, Commissioners, we have an annual report from the police department.
Mayor Commissioners, again, good evening, this is our 2019 racial profiling report, we have to present it in front of the council, in order to be in compliance with state regulations. For the 2019 year, our department pulled over fourteen thousand seven hundred and forty-five vehicles, and the, the stats are there, out of that, six thousand nine hundred and forty-six were female drivers, seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine were male drivers, so it's fairly even.
Fairly even.
Citations that were issued were two thousand one hundred and eleven, the rest were warnings, and a couple of incidents where they were arrested, issued citations, or issued warnings.
Just mainly to follow compliance with profiling and?
Every year, we have to present it to the commission.
Any other, this time, do we entertain a motion? Okay, that's right, it's the presentation that, just for complying purpose, compliance purposes, alright, any other questions for Chief?
Thank you, George.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, five B, presentation and acceptance of the 2018-2019 Financial Audit of the City of Rio Grande City.
Mayor, Commissioners, we, we have Mr. Hernandez, who was, had a slight cough, and for the situation we're in, consideration of what he's going on, he didn't show up in person, but he's calling in.
Okay.
Does anybody have one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hernandez, good evening, sir.
Yes, sir, how are you, sir?
Doing well?
Good.
We have you on speakerphone, and we have the commission here, tell us a great news.
It is good news, I'd, hopefully everyone has a copy of the audit, I'd like to go to page eighteen. And if anybody has trouble hearing me, please stop me, and I will be briefed tonight.
Okay, we're all on page eighteen, go ahead.
Okay, okay, page eighteen is your operating statement, the first column is the general fund, under account five zero two zero, total revenues, six million six hundred eighty-three thousand, as you move down, you look at account six zero three zero, expenditures, six million nine hundred twenty thousand, so that means expenditures exceeded revenues by negative two hundred thirty-seven thousand, however, look at your other financing sources under account seven zero eight zero, that is a plus one million fifty thousand dollars, the majority of that is a transfer in from your enterprise fund, so that gives you the net change under account twelve hundred, it's, it's an increase of eight hundred thirteen thousand dollars, so you wouldn't call that a profit if you want, you started with five hundred and seven thousand dollars, there was a prior credit deficit, write off some accounts, to write off some, some checks, and this is your fund balance of one million one hundred nineteen thousand dollars for the general fund.
Yeah, can you make sure that you get the mic there, because you're, we're losing you a bit here and there?
Oh, I'm so sorry, okay, what would you like for me to review again?
We were at the one million one hundred nineteen thousand six hundred and ten, fund balance is three thousand, I think, or account number three thousand?
Yes, that, that is the fund balance for the general fund, that is your ending fund balance.
Excellent.
Yes, it is good, compared to the beginning was five hundred and seven thousand, you'll see that, so you had a profit of eight hundred thousand, you ended with one point one million dollars.
So our financials are good, alright.
They're good, I would estimate that gives you, I would give you about a month and a half of operating expenses, you know, estimate, but certainly you're headed in the right direction, real quickly, to the right of that is your EDC at the very bottom, you ended with a million forty-one thousand.
Hold on, Mr. Hernandez, hold on, Mr. Perez, you had a comment?
What I wanted to point out is that we ended up last year with a, the previous year with a, somewhere around five hundred thousand, and so we had committed to doubling it this year, we've done it, and showed you the time, and so we just wanna emphasize that, that we're doing a lot better than we anticipated, so we're gonna pull that out.
That's correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you, next to that is your EDC at the very bottom, you ended with one million forty-one thousand, and next to that is your combined other special revenue funds, two point four million dollars, okay, let me just clarify that, you see the net change in that one million, I'm sorry, in account twelve hundred, a negative one million thirty-one thousand, that shows a negative in total special revenue funds, but if you look further up under account eighty-nine eleven, you see the negative one million seven thousand, that's the main reason that ended up with that big loss, because you transferred out from your Water Projects Fund into your enterprise fund.
Does, does that include the PUD, that toll?
Say that again?
Does it include the PUD, as far as the toll?
Yeah, that, that's money going into the PUD from your wastewater capital projects fund, you transferred money from your wastewater project fund into the PUD, that's why you see the one million thirty-one thousand one eighty-six for the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Are you still with me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so move right along on page twenty-two and twenty-three.
Go ahead.
Okay, page twenty-two is your operating income statement for your PUD, you'll see the total revenues were six million dollars, and as you look towards the bottom, total expenses were three point eight million dollars, so as you move on to the next page at the very top, you'll see the profit of two million one hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, and then you add other income and expenses, and as you move further down, you'll see that that transfer coming in of one point seven, you had transfers out of eight hundred sixty-six, so the net profit is a change in net position of two million seven thousand and four dollars. Again, you can see that transfer that came in of the one million seven thousand three fifty-six, that is a transfer that came in from your Water Projects Fund, so you ended with sixteen million seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in your PUD, again, that's a good result.
Yes.
Any questions?
It was sixteen million seven hundred twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-nine.
That is correct.
Excellent number.
Yes, that is a good number.
No, those are positive financials, again, can't stress enough.
Yes, very good, very good work from, from staff, and certainly you're heading in the right direction slowly, but good results.
Great, can you continue?
The last thing I wanna say is that there are no findings inside the audit, the finding is outside the audit, and that should be that separate insert that was given to you, you, you were given two separate letters, so that also is good news, the finding is minor, and it is outside of the audit, that's very important, because your staff certainly took corrective action from the prior years, and there are no findings that affect the audit inside of the audit, last year, they were inside of the audit, and this year, I wanna stress that they are not inside the audit, but you do have a finding, as you can see, outside of the audit, and is considered minor.
Excellent news.
Yeah, very good news.
Excellent news, and kudos to all the staff, Mr. Perez, for making this happen and working diligently through this, I know that this year, we committed to making this possible, and of course, through Mr. Hernandez's help, and everyone, Mr. Lionel Cantú as well, and of course, Ms. Laura Ramirez back here, and everyone that's been in part of this, thank you, Mr. Perez.
It was a team effort and kudos to Mr. Cantu and staff because they really structured the process. Uh, they've been very big on post training also. Uh, we're looking forward to the cut-off for first year where they can be posting prescriptions closer to real time. So that there is no last minute rush when we're trying to get the audit ready or preparing the paperwork for Mr. Hernandez, whether it's delays or must. So we maintain the course. We should be looking even better next year.
Excellent. Our financials can't say enough about a great position that we're in. And anything else, Mr. Hernandez, that you would like to conclude here?
I do not. That's pretty much all I had to cover tonight. I appreciate you letting me do this. I've been under the weather a little bit. And being a, being a kidney donor, I like to take extra care of myself. So I had a cold, a cough I can't get rid of, and I appreciate you letting me do this over the telephone.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Thank you. Appreciate your time, Mr. Hernandez. And again, excellent news and certainly shows the work and diligence that the staff have, has done. Of course, through the leadership of a commission and Mr. Perez and everyone else. So great teamwork and team effort. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Bye.
I appreciate it. Okay, good night and stay safe.
Likewise. Excellent news, Mr. Perez. Again, the numbers don't lie. We are in an excellent position.
It's ahead of schedule and kudos to staff. They actually put a lot of effort in sticking to the process. And without them, we wouldn't be in this position. Obviously, every year we've been improving, but this is one, the first year that you can say there's breathing room. Because prior years, they were just struggling to maintain and catch up. They were in a catch-up mode, trying to, you know, catch up on everything. We were behind them. So luckily or however you want to label it, it was more important than anything else that got us where we are. And so if we can continue the course with the staff we have, we're going to be an excellent team next year.
Great. And at this point, do we, is there any action on this item? This is a presentation and acceptance. Do we?
We accept the audit. I'm presenting.
Okay. Do we have a motion at this time?
I don't move.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ramirez, I mean by Commissioner Garza. At least we can laugh. All right, we have a second.
Second, ma'am.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next item is item five C, discussion and possible action to declare certain equipment as surplus.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is a surplus equipment. I believe we have some items from P D, library, pad, building works in fire. This morning.
All right.
Just have to open it up to make sure we declare this, what people are getting.
Okay, do we entertain a motion at this time? Anyone? Or you want to take some more time and see what else is out? Okay, all right. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Do we have a second by Commissioner Ramirez? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next item is five D, presentation and acceptance on opening a bank account for the General Sanchez statue.
Commissioner Ramirez, this is, I think this is theirs. We're trying to make sure we have an account so that they can cross the front lines that are being built in.
Okay. All right, do we entertain a motion at this time?
I don't move, mayor.
Yeah, motion to approve by Commissioner Jones.
Yes, let's just, because it's specifically regarding the funds for General Sanchez. Let me just, uh, motion. Because it's a specific, uh, now.
Okay. All right, so move up to make a motion to authorize the city manager to open a bank account to receive accounts for funds designated specifically for a General Sanchez statue.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Jones.
I'll say the motion.
Second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Next item is item six, contracts and agreements, letter A. Discussion and possible action to approve contract with Pyro Shows of Texas for display on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty at the Basilio Villarreal Municipal Park.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is Sarah Hernandez. We've got, obviously, an event coming up. So she wanted to leave, postpone for now because of the most recent activities regarding the road environments.
Okay, so no action on item five A. Moving on to item five B, discussion and possible action to approve change order number one to five-star Clark construction for Rio Grande City St. Ice project rattler drive utilities.
That's Mr. Rio Delta.
He's best.
Mayor, Commissioners, this change order is to amend his contract to include the fire hydrants and connections that were along rattler drive. When Rio Delta was putting up the plans, he separated the onsite, which are those infrastructure improvements along rattler drive. Uh, he separated them from the offsite, which are the boards that are under highway and the one that runs behind IBC through the railroad tracks. And that was to determine what improvements were going to be onsite as they were to ones that were going to be off. So in the, in changing them and separating them, he forgot to add those five hydrants. They are in the plans. They were just not in the bid document. So we're using the same bid unit prices. And they are going to be completed as soon as this change order is approved.
But there's no, as far as change in funding?
Yes, there is, sir.
How much money? What is it going to cost?
By forty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents.
That's kind of what funds?
Public utilities. And these are requirements under our three-year agreement that we are to provide the infrastructure to the site. And, um...
I don't see anything else on here as far as the amount and why?
A memo? In the change order form?
Six B. Hold on, my mistake.
There's a form and a memo.
Hello, Mr. Herrera.
Yes, sir, mayor.
Okay, so we're talking about this. So again, why, going back to this, was this something we didn't plan for? Or why do we have to go through the process of changing this and costing more money?
Actually, if y'all recall, when, well, there's, there's two things there, mayor. Uh, the hydrants, as y'all recall, when I, when I presented the, the project to award the contract, I mentioned that in, in changing back and forth from onsite to offsite, to onsite utilities, remember we split it up? Part of it was going to be paid by, by the, the EDA part wasn't, then it, it all wanted to be in on the cities. I inadvertently left five of the hydrants that were in the plan off the bid form. It went from seven to one because I, I, we, we split up five hundred feet of early water line and a hydrant for that. So in, in all that confusion, I changed, I changed the item to one and didn't change it back to the six that we needed for the, the, the rest of the contract. I explained that when, when I recommended the award of the, of the, uh, of, of the contract. And then the extra eight-inch line had to do for those five inch, for those five hydrants. Because there was part of that, that, that went off the end. Now, the sewer manhole is related more to the lift station for Rio Motors as part of the TWDB project. After we bid the project, the staff came to us and said, look, we, we, we want to redirect the, the force main, the, that manhole that it tied into there at, at the intersection of Pine and Eighty-Three is a shallow manhole. Uh, we'd rather take it somewhere else. And so we, we redirected the force main to the west over to a manhole behind the, the bank. Now, once we got to the manhole, there's several lines that go into it. Uh, it's an old, old manhole. It's in bad shape. So the contractor asked us, look, before I tie in, do y'all want to upgrade the manhole? The decision was made to upgrade that manhole. Uh, but that, that extension of the force main was, was added on to, was made part of the utilities project for St. Ice. So when we went to, the decision was made to upgrade that manhole, that got it, that got, that added in there. And so that, that's where the, the sanitary sewer manhole came in. Do y'all have the breakdown there?
Yes.
Okay, and then, of course, on St. Ice, there's eight lots. So we had eight sewer services for each lot. But a couple of the lots are big. I wanted to add some extra manholes, or not manholes, but services to the big lot. So we wouldn't have to cut up any of, of the, the improvements on the street later in case they needed more services, more than the one six-inch service. And so there, there's, there's, uh, three additional services that, that we're adding to the contract.
Okay. So this would satisfy all the requirements for that? We won't have to come back again for this?
Yes, sir. We're almost, all the sewer is in, uh, attested, except for some of the services that are crossing the street. The reason I'm adding, also, if you notice, I'm adding sixty calendar days to the contract. Initially, we had planned on having this project started and going before we got the, the, the street contractor on there. But for whatever reason, there were delays in getting the, the contractor started, partly because of the agreement with the developer, hadn't been finalized. Uh, and, and whatnot, we didn't have access to the property. So now they're both onsite at the same time. So the, the, the sewer, the utility contractor is having to wait for a little bit on the, uh, the roadway and drainage contractor to get a little bit ahead. So he can back in there, go back in there and finish up the, the water line. So I added sixty days just to make sure that we covered him. But as far as the, the additional work, this should be it. Um, the original budget for the project was three hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. So we're still under budget, sir. We're not going over the budget.
Perfect.
If I may, mayor, initially, we were looking at boring across to a manhole that was a little further south of Payless. Uh, when they were working on the plans, the storm sewer that Tech Stop had placed in there with the new, uh, improvements were in the way. So that was an alternate line of sewer to go and that will service the whole development of St. Ice. That was one change that was different from the first budget for the St. Ice for sewer service.
I, I wasn't able to hear most of that, but...
Well, at this time, entertain a motion at this time. Any other questions by commissioners?
I don't move. We approve a change order.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza.
I'll say the motion.
Have a second by Commissioner Ramirez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Herrera. Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Appreciate it. Next item is, is nine C, discussion impossible, or six? I'm already seeing double here. Six C, discussion and possible action to approve the professional service agreement with Azar Government Solutions or Tax Auditing Services.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is something I've been looking at, uh, in working with the control, even though we approve tax collections to certainly see. I'm confident that we are collecting all the taxes due in the city. Uh, and I still see some businesses on the cash base that might issue receipts. What this company does for organizations like Rio Delta is, you do audits, they sell tax, franchise, as an example. Uh, there is a charge for it, but anything that they're going to be charging is based on what they find that's new. So for example, if they go to a hotel and that hotel has not been paying any taxes and they have identified, if they have been collecting, they've been collecting and they owe it. Whatever they find, for example, on hotel tax, they'll be charged a hundred and fifty dollars per audit per hotel. So if they have two hotels, it's a hundred and fifty each, plus a fifty percent of whatever they discover, okay? That's how they work. They won't get paid any funds or money from us if they're not discovering anything. Of course, in this case for hotel, they can charge a nine fifty, but that's it if they don't find additional revenue. So they're searching, they're going in there and looking for what we're missing out on. If they don't find any additional taxes that are owed to us, they're only going to charge us a nine hundred and fifty dollars per hotel.
So nine, I'm sorry, so it's nine fifty per audit per hotel?
Per hotel.
Plus, you said what, fifty percent of what?
Fifty percent of what they discovered. So let's say, as an example, they find that we're being shorted a hundred thousand dollars a year by hotel pay. They're going to take half of that off the top because they found it. And first of all, we, we were not giving that amount to begin with. So it's not like we're paying it out of our pockets.
But they're going to also enforce a collection aspect of it?
Yes, there'll be a process that they're going to be keeping an eye on for the next several years. That's hotel. Self-tax, slightly different, okay? Uh, they look for a twenty-two month period. What they will do is the same concept. They identify on the self-tax side businesses that are shorting us. And they identify, let's say, in Board of Directors as an example. And they find that they're shorting us a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. They're going to go in there and say, okay, we're looking, we're not going to charge you like a hotel, but we're going to charge you, we're going to have a twenty-two percent of what we find in new revenues. But they're also going to go forward twenty-two months in the future because they're going to keep monitoring for us and providing us weekly, I mean not weekly, monthly or quarterly reports depending on how that business files. So they're not only going to look at it now, but they're going to keep tabs twenty-two months in the future. And they're going to be collecting that twenty-two percent twenty-two months in the future. Does that make sense? Again, this is only new revenue that they find. They don't find anything, they're not going to charge anything, okay? Uh, the same thing for franchise. Uh, they will be charging thirty-nine percent and they go thirty-nine in months in the future also. They're slightly different because of the type of tax structure that they have. But all in all, they're only going to be looking for collecting any off the top of what they find that's new that we will not collect any before. Does that make sense?
Mr. Perez, then how do they conduct, how, how do they acquire the material to be able to conduct these audits?
Yeah, it's audits.
Their audit is number one. They work with state, they work with the state for the beginning of reporting, before they begin filing. Then they come in and check their books. So they're true auditors. They're going to look at what they've been reporting and what they have in the book.
But what authority do they have as far as going through a business and?
They're coming in on behalf of the city. As a city, we can. We have the authority to go and audit them. Now, we don't have the resources. We don't do that. But this is what they do all over the country. I don't recall. These I actually met when I went to T M L. There were actually several companies and I just related them based on the conversation and, and how flexible they are in working with us. The others were straight down. I just wanted to charge you a percent and so on and so forth. So they're going to come in and educate us and they're going to provide us additional reporting information, which I thought was a lot better than the other companies because they go to the N T B to making sure that we get the reports that we should be getting from those companies and how about their filing and reporting and compliance. So if we're to know if they're, if they're delivering, containing or not. All these collections.
Okay, but the nine fifty is per?
Hotel.
Per hotel. So if you have five hotels, they're going to be charging us, let's say, almost five thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
To audit those hotels.
Just to audit those hotels?
Yes, sir.
That seems a little steep, though. Or is there?
For an audit, no, sir.
No?
No, sir.
But let's say they don't find anything, so we're still paying five thousand? Right? So it's costing us more especially, or do we, at this point, do we think that that's going on? I mean, is this something that we need or?
Uh, there are costs since I got here, I can tell you they're close, but yet I can go to police reports where people have been, PD has been called because there's problems there in the hotel. So now you go to Rio Motor, uh, he hasn't been fired yet. Yet you see calls here and twice all the time. So we lap the collections. We don't have the expertise to do it in-house. This is a way to get in there and want to identify correctly what's really owed to us, you go after collections.
How many years back are they going to audit? How many years back are they going to audit?
Four years, I think. Uh, you can audit as far back as you want, but you can't do that for you. Now, they know the tax laws inside out. That's what they do. They know how to audit us. Uh, so they know if somebody's, you know, not really receiving all the tax and maybe hiding some of their tax.
And, and the money to pay them would be upfront or would be once we get the collection, then, then we pay?
Collection of new revenue.
So once it's collected, then whatever fee, minus fees that they?
Yes, sir.
Or do we have to cut them a check? In other words, hold?
No, additional revenue. What we can do, if you would like, to get a better comfortable with this company, I can have one of the representatives come and kind of...
Yes, that would be something we can visit with to get a better picture before we, we take action. Unless, what do you all think, I mean, at this point?
I think it's a good idea. I think that we discussed with Mr. Perez in the past that there's some businesses that, right, that collect only cash. You know, there are some hotels that they are close, but not necessarily. So I think it's a good, I think it's a...
Uh, now, they will pay, the contract will continue till they're done, and, uh, for example, and one of the taxes is twenty-two months in the future, so that's how long it's gonna last, because not only are they gonna be reporting to us information that these, uh, businesses are reporting to the Comptroller, and a regulation for the smart reporting, and hearing, uh, and they will also be providing the details as to whether the funds are on or not.
I, I would like to have them here, though, one, to kinda ask them and probe all these questions before we, we just take, you know, action on an item like this, but, you know, whatever the commissioner thinks.
The taxes are not on the way, you know, so the businesses are here, it's not like they're, you know, you're at deadline, there's no need to rush.
Right. There's no need to rush at this time, um, but this is something definitely we need to, I guess, consider as we're moving forward, but...
Again, to shore up whatever outstanding taxes are not being remitted to the city.
Are there other companies that do this too? Are there, I mean...
Yeah, I can reach out to TML, there are several here, uh, and have them come in.
And maybe we can reach out to all of them, and then they can come in, and then we can decide at that point.
Sure. No problem.
Go ahead.
Legal, we're gonna ask for those sort of time, because we do have some concerns with the contract, but, uh, I guess it looks like that's what you guys are gonna do.
Okay.
What I think we had a concern, they wanted a, um, a not, a confidentiality cost, you know, we can't do that as a city. They wanted a, a indemnification, we can't do that as a city. And then they wanted a termination with penalty, if the contract was terminated. So our suggestion is obviously without penalty. And then they wanted venue of this mitigation somewhere else, and obviously we, we wanna change that to spark down. So we were gonna ask, we had about sixty, seventy concerns.
Okay. At this time, then, table the item.
Exactly.
Have a motion.
A motion.
A motion to table by Commissioner Garza, second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Alright.
I opposed? Motion carries. Next is item seven, executive session, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, personnel matters, section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven, economic development matters. This time it is eight-twenty-six.
Mayor, I wanted to request that, uh, mod, item seven, D, to involve the content we discussed in public instead of, uh, opposing.
Okay. So we'll go into executive session, and then come back and discuss that item. Is that possible?
Yes, we can go and come back.
Let's cover all the other items first, and then we can come back on...
Or you can discuss it now, and then go into executive session. I agree with your question.
Okay, so...
It's yours.
Alright, so, well, might as well, let's this, no, let's go into executive session, then we'll come back and discuss in public. Okay, so executive session, what we're gonna do is use this room for executives, so everybody can please exit the chambers.
Oh, we're over here.
Yes. Alright, so is somebody presenting?
Yes, sir. I was gonna go over, uh, some of my accomplishments.
Okay.
Uh, basically, I've given your handout, I've got a little over, this part, I can have here, I'm very grateful and appreciative for the opportunity, uh, in supporting and guaranteeing, and we have moved through the improvements of functions and operation of the growing city, obviously with limited resources. Uh, a primary importance in, in our accountability is to citizens and taxpayers, obviously, we're a city that's gonna, that's gonna continue to grow, and, uh, we always need to make sure we secure the largest return for any dollar tax dividends that we have to use, okay, or spend. Uh, during my tenure, I kind of focused on some overall goals. Uh, my focus or emphasis was to provide, to review, analyze, prepare, implement plans to address and identify the overall functions and operations of the city. And basically, uh, to come up with an improvement plan to develop, and to keep what is working, and to address what is not working in the best interest of the city. Uh, on the human resources side, of course, you know, we fill positions, and we always try to fill them with the best qualified, okay? Uh, sometimes we're limited on what options we have, uh, based on the area we're in, but we try to make, make the best deal. Such as, the other thing we looked at is, if we have a backcooperative in public works and a backcooperative in public utilities, we try to balance that as much as possible we can, because we can't have a new backcooperator earning fifty thousand, as an example, in P U V, and a revenue operator in public works earning forty thousand. That's unfairness. So I try to stretch that across the board as much as possible. Uh, we also adjusted that if you're a department, anybody that has had a special license, we already do it in the police department, but we haven't been running through the system in the P U V, and we've done it across the board. So think of says additional water licenses, the A D Q, or the sewer plant licensing for wastewater saving and compliance, okay? Obviously, those licenses are important, and there's unlimited licenses, we cannot even if you still get off the street. Uh, accountability measures, there were several standards and measures that I instituted to assist employees in the performance and the vision and responsibility. One set system of dollars through P U V's. And yes, they've criticized for monitoring people, but at the end of the day, uh, we must monitor waste very closely. We did find that a cop who had, that no longer with us, that actually was spending a lot of time in an empty neighborhood, and for hours upon end. And this went on for quite some time. So basically, for reducing tax dollars, they have not been controlled, or he was doing things, and I, in the neighborhood, they had no awareness, okay? So those are the kinds of things that have come up with that. We've also had people to identify, another cop who was had prison in his back, and he was ninety-eight to ninety-nine thousand dollars. If that cop had had an accident, the law, like in the city, would be obvious, would have been sued, and he would have lost, because they were speeding, and they had a prison in the back. Uh, another accountability system is the I W O S. It's not just an accountability system, but it's a workhorse system. So the term here is, I, I look at operations and look at technology, to take advantage of the limited resources that we have to monitor performance, because we obviously cannot be here anywhere all the time. That includes our surveillance cameras. On occasion, those are used to go and check if somebody complains about something. I did catch a while, about a year ago, folks in the, uh, in the public utilities, this actually was more than that before Mr. Chris came in, they tended to go and linger around for the past, the last hour of the day, and they were just waiting for twelve hours. And then we're talking about practices, and for data correction, okay? So some of these tools have been criticized, that, you know, Big Brother's watching, but then they are just looking after the tax dollars that they're not wasting. So accountability is just there. Uh, on the financial stability, uh, my focus in this area was to streamline operations and reduce expenditures, uh, to review financial obligations, to take steps to minimize these obligations, to improve the financial credit, obviously, we've done that for standard reports, and through completion of our audits. Over the years, all that has been able to increase revenue. As a result of the city not operating in a balanced budget in two seventeen, twenty-seventeen, I issued a budget directive, I use another here, that basically stated to staff that one, we're increasing our own decisions and not automatically replacing them, two, that the overtime rate is being screwed nice, and three, that we're gonna cut across the board fifty percent, or reduce our expenses fifty percent of our spending. That we have to take that mission to be able to balance the budget that year. If you remember, or you may not have remembered, at that time, the middle level was taking two hundred thousand dollars every two weeks from public utilities to be able to do payroll. That went on for quite some time, most of the year. At that time, and every single time I would ask, if I was being told it was a cash flow issue, it never was a cash flow issue, it's just that there was never a balanced budget to begin with. And we were spending more than what the revenue that was coming in. Upon reviewing the tax revenue, uh, that was coming in, I also identified, because obviously as a tax type law, the Comptroller's office, seventy-six businesses that were not charging a direct tax bill. Seventy-six businesses in the city of Atlantic, there's a lot of businesses, and one of them happened to be a, uh, two large stores, uh, and I'll mention them, they were down, for example, they were charging six in a quarter instead of eight in a quarter. The problem there was that the city had continued to addix areas, uh, and brought it into the fold to the city limits, but nobody had bothered to contact the Comptroller's office to notify me, that they changed it, and therefore, those businesses were never notified properly to charge any tax rate. That has been the way. Um, also identified in the process, this is after years, apparently the new meters had been pushed out, uh, or wrangled, and they charged three hundred and fifty dollars for about fifteen years, uh, considering that they should have been paying thirteen thousand or fifteen thousand. So I scrutinized our expenditures, I looked for opportunities, and every step away, and sometimes those things are covered, uh, after, you know, a lengthy process, but they're worth it, because obviously, those revenues have been essential to continue to operate, number one, and number two, to invest in infrastructure that's very necessary, that we've been very behind for so many years. Uh, the real worst supply was in a similar situation, they were behind three hundred and fifty thousand plus, and to bring them in, negotiate a, a process for them to go get a loan and pay us off, they got a little bit behind again, we bottomed the table, we were working through it, but it's not that three hundred and fifty thousand plus at this time. Uh, reduction in water loss, when I first got here, we were at fifty-four percent water loss, over half of the water that we were bringing out of the river, cleaning up and putting the chlorine and all that, and ready to be distributed to the household, fifty-four percent was being lost, okay? Since then, we're now down seven percent. Imagine if you lost half of it, what do you pay for it? I mean, that adds up, we were losing a lot of money. Uh, audits, obviously, that's no use for anyone, the audits have not been kept up. Um, we did go through a couple of CPAs in the process, because we were not making progress. Luckily, we got back on track, and now we're caught up, the audit was presented from last year, which is never scheduled, and as everybody has told me before, if you're in, uh, our folks of the grant buyers, you know, without the audits, we cannot go out with all the money, we cannot go out with grants. And obviously, that was holding the city back. Uh, in the process of getting the audits done, obviously, we were interviewed, uh, through nine, we spent several hours, several days with them, and were able to show them the history, and show them the times, how much progress we made, from coming out in the red to getting to black. And obviously, that invested enough that we came out with a name rate, which was not expected, very welcome, and that's allowed us to obviously do the sensitive obligations, and hopefully get the best rate available to the market. Um, in the process, when we did got the P U V rate, we did go back and, uh, re-issued some bonds, in the refinancing process, obviously, that was a value, we came out ahead by one point eight million on savings, at the end of the day. The city continues to not only build its financial stability by growing the fund balance, as you heard today, the God, and we doubled the fund balance before the year goes over. We had to double it in four months, we did it in less than six months, okay? None of this happens by accident, okay? You have to be, obviously, a sticker for maintaining the force, and when you do the income, and obviously, you can't ever be successful when you deal with financials and the audits will prove that. City administration, along with D C and Star County, and industrial foundations staff, have actively been promoting the city as a place to own a home or a business. This is highly implemented by those factors which are listed out. The city started in late of thousands in twenty sixteen, almost a million dollars, and now we're on the, on the positive side. The number of square footage, you see the samples below that, has continuously increased, on both in the commercial residential. We did have a claim one of the years, but we recovered since. The valuation continued to go up, we went from four point one million on the residential to three point nine million. Uh, while the number of commercial valuations went from eighteen million to fifty million, we expect that to come back up, obviously, with a new development protocol in mind. Self-tax revenue has continued to be steadily increasing, uh, through the year, actually with some records. And you can look at some of the graph, the graph that's attached here. The line in yellow represents the last year, which is twenty nineteen. A lot of that also goes back to, uh, communication with Comptroller's and Bogina, that we leave their presence here so that they can enforce the tax law on the self-tax side, and ensure that our, the liquids are being collected upon. Uh, improvement in utilities and services, I worked closely with the P U D director to outstanding, to address all the outstanding T C two violations. While we have not cleared them all, we've made a lot of progress, uh, because if I remember correctly, the same T C two violation that were identified in twenty fifteen came back, were identified again in twenty seventeen, because they were not being cleared, and then we got additional, additional violations that were identified in twenty seventeen. Obviously, a lot of our water storage stations were in disrepair, this is where we outsourced it, and now we have that being, that was contracted with McGuire, and we've seen the tanks being repaired. That's an essential component, we cannot afford to allow it to deteriorate, because that will obviously impact the quality of the water that we're serving services. Uh, the P U D director, Rio Belta, submitted an application to the wastewater treatment plant, and covered some three million dollars. That helped us, uh, we were able to, uh, secure that, and we made a special trip to go face-to-face with them, and which, and of course, every time we would go there, do you have your audits? Do you have your audits? We can't consider you unless you have your audits. So at that time, that face-to-face, I assured we were on track this year to deliver the audits, so we didn't have much of a choice or wiggle room to not have them, not only on time, but ahead of schedule. Worked with, uh, Rio Belta, the new lift stations, I don't know if you recall, but the new lift stations were pretty programmed, uh, started working on it, but there was a, I, I, an interviewing staff. One basic question that I asked him was, was concerning, it wasn't, that was the safety of servicing the lift stations. The initial design did not allow for some of those pumps to be outside the well, and therefore, the employees would have gone into the well itself, where the gas is built up, and we didn't have the gas and has to be permitted to go in there, because poisonous gases accumulate, and there were concerns about their safety. Based on that feedback, I was able to back and have it redesigned then on the lift stations, and what we have today are all the pumps are outside, there are no wells that they have to go diving into to start to do some. Uh, improvement, improvement in water pressure, you know, uh, not too long ago, we were, we had a, uh, a bunch of affordable housing apartments in the North West part of town, they were about to open, but yet they could not test the water pressure, if we had, have water pressure. We, uh, basically, we took the necessary steps, then scored a hundred and eight thousand feet, which showed for the time, extended a line for the, uh, new water plant, in order to be able to increase the pressure to that area, and I don't think we can increase the pressure, but we also connected that line to another line, we, uh, set up a process that is called looping. Anytime you loop lines of water, there are a lot of water coming from one direction and another direction, in case you have low, low water pressure one side of town, for whatever reason, you can, uh, offset it by the other connection coming from the other side of town. That was not being done in the city, now that's a common practice. Obviously, I did come up with that, I do, we haven't realized it, I utilize our, our city engineers as much as possible, and I asked them for their professional opinion, and without them, we wouldn't be doing a lot of things, a lot of these things. Along the way, we also stabilized a lot of the... Along the way, we also stabilized the water pressure. It was not uncommon that the pressure would be so high, they were breaking the old water lines, that is no longer happening. In addition, the new water plant had been basically brought in, was fully automated staff, for whatever reason, that didn't deteriorate, and everything was being operated manually. With basically, people, the employees were pouring their own chemicals, based on their own measurements or experience, obviously exposing themselves unnecessarily to these hazardous chemicals. The plant is now automated. They don't have to do that manually, the chemicals are poured automatically, that's what the systems are for. In addition, we went up around town, and one of the problems we kept having when we were having water pressure issues was that the skates system had been installed in one of the tanks, and it's not at the highest point. So what was happening, there was a tank that was being filled up during the day, it was a long hour. So scheduling wise and priority wise, the tanks were not in sync when they were supposed to be being used to stabilize the pressure for the residents. So we were fighting water being sucked out by the residents, and while we were trying to fill the tanks, so that, we had a mess in our hands. Luckily, the city engineers were able to figure that out, and took the right steps, and fixed the problem. In June, obviously, jumping to public works, we started the city water cleanup. That obviously has helped us tremendously, because it's supposed to drop off their bulky items, we don't have to pick them up ourselves. Also, I'm big in investing in equipment and technology. We talked about GPS and what it's done for us. Not only does it help us identify problem in employees, but it also helps to reduce accidents, reduce gas consumption. It was not uncommon that people were used to turning on their vehicle and park outside forty, forty minutes outside of their office unnecessarily. I'm not talking about a cop sitting in the corner of the light, I'm talking people parked outside their office, I said not. And it was common practice across the whole department. We invested in I-works, obviously, to increase the workflow, to allow the workflow when workers come in from all departments. Not all departments have used it to the extent that we'd like to see them, but there's no reason why somebody cannot call in, I have a pothole, or they didn't pick up my trash, so to report to, obviously, Mr. Anadis and Company, or I have a water pressure issue, or I have a school problem. All that, obviously, can be generated, comes in through a call, or someone can email us, and we can generate the work order to the employees while they're operating, and feed to their iPads. Purchases and grants. Our CTV, obviously, if you haven't realized it by now, a lot of vehicles and equipment has been purchased. One of the things that I suspect further down, that I did with the PD when it first came in, apparently, we were using some of their forfeiture funds to balance the budget. I shy away from that, actually, I'm not touching forfeiture funds, and allowed them to use their forfeiture funds to purchase equipment. That coupled with their abilities, obviously, is their, so the logistics assistant chief is very good at keeping up with grants, and will take every opportunity that has allowed him to go out for grants and secure additional vehicles. And other departments will be able, because obviously, the financial condition of the city is a lot better, and that will be able to go and purchase some of those items ourselves, if there are no grants available. But just as the PD department is no different than all the city of Roma, they have vehicles that it's costing us more to maintain than what it costs us to pay what we, the monthly payment that we do on financing a car. At the end, you're paying more than before what we had. And we had those cars in the shop a lot, and they were costing us more downtime, and obviously, for repair. Obviously, you are aware of the vector fraud that came in. That was, the purpose behind that was to save us money. We're spending with a local popcorn guy, sometimes to ten to fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a month, because we had those many requests to come and do things with us. We looked at the situation, it ended up being cheaper first to buy our electric truck. So we brought that in-house, and that has helped us a lot. Sanitation department purchased the first truck in twenty seventeen. Twenty nineteen, Public Works purchased the second brush truck. That has allowed us to catch up, we don't get the complaints anymore, that we're not picking up their brush, okay? Of course, if you look at the CEO, if you look at today, one of those items in there is obviously is a pot burner with an excavator, so that we can burn our own truck, brush, and avoid paying somebody else who are unnecessarily paying too much to get that pot to go out.
How much do you think that would save us?
We're averaging, and that says averaging five to six thousand a month. It goes from more to eight thousand sometimes, six thousand. But average cost of work, we're five to six thousand dollars a month, that we're paying for the brush we're taking care of, okay? Now, as the city continues to grow, that's going to go higher, okay? But since the time it takes to pick it up, and then we have to pay somebody else to get rid of it for us. Supporting chief, and obviously, replacing the old units, again, like I said before, have allowed him to use a hundred percent of his usual funds, and leave him alone, so that he can take care of his department, obviously, that's a critical department. You notice the, they had local and state regulations. I'm not saying I was the one driving all those regulations, but it comes down to a team member. Having employees that are able to do their jobs and supporting them, obviously, would be recognized at different levels. The library has been recognized, several stands, main street's been recognized. You know, the event that was identified as the national level was, you know, important. Obviously, people are noticing that Viva Mango is something that is something you might want to come see here in Veranday. Obviously, we were ranked as the safest city in twenty nineteen. Wilderness Development Infrastructure Partnership. All of this stuff that I've been talking about, I didn't do it alone. It's a partnership, whether it's to employees, or somebody who contracted, it's a team member, you guys supporting us, and decisions and approvals, it's not a one-night show. June twenty eighth, for example, the grand opening of seven fifty-five, you guys had started that a long time ago, we're finally achieving fruition, but that basically puts us in a better position now, because we're already working with TechStop. That connection, that seven fifty-five is going to continue to connect us to thirty-one sixty-seven, that's going to go to six forty-nine eventually to Loma Linda. Well, why am I mentioning that now? Because part of the plan that the CEO that I'm asking for is the thorough plan. Basically, TechStop, as I always know, is he who has the plan first. There's opportunities first to fund, maybe an offline road. For example, if we connect this going from maybe three north to connect us to that new road, okay? To get around north, not only north and south, but maybe around town, they might be able to fund it, and then turn it over to us, and we may change it. So it would cost us a fair amount, but we have to have a thorough plan. It needs to make sense, and connect it what they're trying to do. Development in twenty eighteen, we collaborated with planning department, fire department, with the Ridge to the Health Services. Obviously, the planning department has been very busy, that's an eleven million dollar expansion. So business breeds more business, success breeds more success. Another thing people are noticing is they're coming into Veranday, looking at what offices are coming up, that maybe one I live in is one. The United Partner brings, obviously, to the Port of entry, that's important to us. Why? Because strategy is going to continue to grow. We're already talking, saying, we're talking about bringing home storage and bringing warehouses. Who's already looking, obviously, the cattle coming to there. It's going to extend this grid, eventually, it's going to get wider, and more factories are going to be coming to there. Going back to a thorough plan, that's why it's important that we have one, and we start railing on it instead of putting it off. EDC, obviously, worked on a strategic plan, that took several, a lot of departments coming together. I think we have the county also working on one. Strategic plans are important, because it's a roadmap going forward. You don't have those planned in place, which are basically buried around in circles and not going anywhere. Portable homes, most recently, I've been working with them, because they're invested again, coming back in, but they were concerned about the border walls. I met with them yesterday, showed them confidential information, I say this again, don't discuss this, but we're looking okay, the wall's not going to cut through the middle of one of your houses, or anything like that, okay? So they're looking at putting that out. Seven fifty-five mobility plan, obviously, that's a connection to the Port of entry. That obviously is going to TechStop and EDC, that's important, all the thorough plan. Development partnership with Saint Night. You heard, you know, the Saint Night developer, you know, these working relationships we have with them, is basically moving the business forward. It's a proof to us that we continue to work with them closely, to make sure that we don't miss a step, that this thing gets successfully completed. Obviously, it's going to bring several, multiple businesses, at least fourteen plus. It's going to bring a lot of jobs, and we're expecting that. On top of that, it's going to bring additional revenue on the tax, probably taxes, and self-tax itself, because of the stores, or businesses that are going to open. Partnership with the border wall, I continue to agree with them, we haven't agreed. I just got some additional information, but I'm not able to present to you. And I've never agreed with them as to where they are, because they have not shown me the study that I already studied from the last, the line on the wall. We're somewhere between. First thing's probably come mainly to the city, we pushed them all the way to the river, now we're here. But I don't know exactly where those points are, they haven't shown me the study that supports building the wall yet. In twenty eighteen, Chamber Commerce came online, they revived them, they've been very active most recently. They're helping us with grand openings, they're enforcing, playing a role, combining with EDC and the industrial foundation. And not only supporting new businesses at early, but existing businesses and also attracting new ones. Partnerships such as the Development of Special Protection, and obviously, you know, working closely with Chief Castillo and the county attorney, that contain an important group of people that have, has helped the community, not just in Veranday, but in different areas of the county, such as Roma, Comarca, and Azuria. And continue to support it, and support the community to work on it. Other partnerships, you've done, obviously, via commissioners, in Ford, Ruta Cinquanta Cuatro, the quality tours are dealing with the wooden construction. Back to infrastructure, we, the lift station project, is going to put us, hopefully, it should last fifteen to twenty years. We have plans to move water plant to revive it. You know, and working with the chief, obviously, the RICSA's position wasn't around two years ago. So that position we continue to support. In summary, the overall economic outlook for the city of Veranday looks very positive. This is supported by the infrastructure projects currently underway to support the residential and commercial as current and future needs, new development plans, and airport stores affecting new business, strategic gear, and diversifying common. In addition, bond balance policies, and we introduced a wonderful investment policy. Obviously, are developed to foster, close to keeping those positive bonds balanced up. In order to support the current, future residences and businesses, cities refuse to invest in infrastructure, following several examples. We're looking at putting a master range plant, we're asking for your support in that. We're looking at putting a thorough plan, that's very necessary. We're looking at developing a zoning plant, zoning ordinance. We're looking at doubling the water treatment plant, obviously, we give funds for that. We're working on bringing together two more hotels for the many of the citizens, that's what we're working on that. We're looking at bringing home storage, we're looking at possibly bringing the Sams as an anchor store and a base for home people. We're also looking at making pedestrian walk-in safety downtown by extending the curb to the streets, so that crosswalks are shorter. We're looking at developing handicap residents and setting up activities for them. I hosted one recently, I don't know if you're aware of it, these were blind people who were feeding, they were doing it with our library event that they had. And they, it was too late that they showed up, one was completely blinded, partial blind. I like to expand those kind of activities for these folks. We're typically doing things with a common person that can walk and walk and see. We need to consider the handicap folks. We're developing activities, obviously, building, the safety building for fire, complaint department is crucial to our growth. And ensuring that we have the equipment and the instruction to do it. Plans are underway to secure, obviously, the funding for thorough plan. Obviously, because we have traffic, telling us good enough. We also have a great event, we talked about that, and we also have plans to repair the streets we haven't repaired in a long time. In conclusion, for most part, of all of our accomplishments, that's it, our accomplishments, these are not all of us mine. It took you guys, it took the support from staff and any employee we have, to get these accomplishments where they are. Each commissioner, the undersecretary mayor, had been different experiences and background to the table. Community partnerships and public opinion also matters. Each one of you remembers his differences, interests, and opinions, and that is totally helpful for the organization to function at its maximum. I continue to try to arrive at a representation of all the decision-making processes. However, sometimes this is not achievable, I recognize that. Regardless, the attempt should always be made. The fact that we do not agree at all the time, delighted to be the best motivation to research further, to become more proficient in a subject, and to consider more than one alternative, to take every decision through extreme, is this decision investment to the city and its citizens. Based on what we have accomplished, I think thus far, we've done it most of the time, if not during the time. Together, we have made all kinds of decisions and managed to change processes as best we could. We continue to ask, what will the financial impact and otherwise be? Is this about one event, individual, or isolated situation? What is the profundity of evidence? How can we assist staff and employees to understand why a decision is made and assist working together for the benefit of the organization? All in all, it has been a great experience, and I thank each one of you for it. Standing for you, now, and humbly ask, if you consider renewal of my contract for three more years with appropriate compensation for past and future performance, I am ready for the challenges that will come with the projects as we are now on the table. Much remains to be done to secure additional assistance, be it financial or otherwise. And our calendar is filled with so much to do, and no time to slow down. You know that I'm ready to stay the course and more quickly, hopefully, bringing all required entities together, as I have proven so. I am ready to iron out differences and collaborate, define a critical path within each new direction project to continue to improve the quality of life undergrounded city. Most importantly, our big continuity to what we have already started, and can assure you, no time will be wasted on delivering budgets on time and achieving budget. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. And this here is a referendum on all the accomplishments that the city has done over the course of the last several years, of course, with the help of all the departments, certainly, the commission here. And the way you highlighted this, it's been, we have had many accomplishments, period. Obviously, today also, the audit was very, very favorable towards the city, and the position that we're in, as you were documenting your financial accountability, we are in an excellent position, and of course, you're a big part of that. Continuing on this, Mr. Villarreal, as far as the evaluation portion of it, how do we proceed with that? So we can't sure that we are in the...
You can go around the commission and see if there are any questions. And Mr. Perez indicated earlier, which is to do the evaluation.
Okay. Perfect. Start on this end, commissioners, Cortez?
I don't have any questions.
No questions?
Just a comment, again, I had it up to the divisional for Mr. Perez about two weeks still. And no doubt, excellent city manager, done a great job. We discussed the concerns that I had, and I discussed them with him privately. So I'll leave it at that, and I think that they've had a good conversation, and yeah, he's done a great job. Thank you.
Commissioner, that's it?
No comment.
Commissioner?
You know, there's always a room for improvement, Mr. Perez. Things are, things are never perfect. Obviously, your resume speaks for yourself, and of course, we need to give credit where credit is due, as well as department heads and city employees, and as well as this commission that has made us a team to be able to accomplish all of this. And Veranday is continuing to grow, and I believe that, that you're a big part of it. I believe that your leadership, your leadership in steering these projects along are crucial. And I believe in what you're doing. And with that said, I'd like to make a motion that we renew Mr. Perez's contract for three years, and that we authorize you to negotiate his salary.
Okay, so we have a motion at this time, but proceeding as we, before we go into that, continuing with the evaluation though, is there a second at this time? Do you have a motion?
I would like just to say, I know earlier we discussed about going to executive session to discuss terms of contracts. I would like to, if we may go back to executives, we can discuss that. I would like to, if we may go back to seconds, we can discuss that executive.
So then there's not a second at this time? No second at this time? So continuing on that, any other comments regarding that? On my end, I do want to say, Mr. Perez, that I did do, I'd like to do the three sixty evaluation in the sense of, of course, visiting with individuals that are directly under you, and of course, the commission as well as far as their opinion. And it was very extremely favorable, I, in visiting with all the directors overall. It was very extremely positive, and of course, it reflects on the work that you've done. It reflects on the way you manage, of course, the business side. And on that end, it was exceptional. What we have here, of course, as you mentioned, is all reflection of all the staff and yourself, right? And there were some areas of, I guess, call them improvement, things that we can improve upon. And some of those, and again, the majority was all blown. But there were a few areas that definitely we need to reflect on. For example, moving forward, how would you continue to manage individuals that, for whatever reasons, and I don't know what those reasons are, that they might feel that their job is at stake or that they feel that they're going to lose their jobs? And some of that fear that sometimes people have that somehow I'm going to be losing my job.
That's very simple, basically, I would reach out to every individual with purely expectations. At the end of the day, it's about expectations. And if those expectations are not mutually understood and agreed upon, you know, then my expectation may be way off or different. Therefore, they might consider that they're on the different end of the receiving. So understanding and communicating that clearly going forward and steps to, if there's training needs that need to be taken care of because of lack of understanding that they were not maybe overtraining those particular areas and they have weaknesses. But writing out a plan of action for each one of them, saying this is how we spell success. That's what you're debating now, how are you going to be successfully working with that? Without that being written and agreed upon, you know, you're taking...
And that's one of the things, definitely, as we're continuing to move on this is, we're small. We're still small, but we're growing, right? And for the longest time, we were running City Hall as a mom-and-pop store. You know, however, we know that we need to get away from that, and we are. We are moving on the business perspective, business model, the growth, the prosperity that's occurring. And there's a challenge with that, obviously. And we need to make sure because, and still, have that, definitely, we don't want any of our employees to feel that their job is at jeopardy, right? But at the same time, of course, we need to have expectations to make sure that we give them the opportunities to be successful. And that goes at every department, right? We're going to give people the opportunity to be successful, and if they don't, if they don't have the training, okay, we're going to get them the training, make sure that people have the resources to do that. And yes, there's, we have had some growth that maybe we need to go back. And we, as a commission, maybe in an area two, how do we train staff that maybe grew into positions that somehow we need to help them along the way too? But definitely, no employee should ever feel that I'm afraid that I'm going to be losing my job. I mean, no, I mean, especially, now granted, there are expectations, right? We all have expectations, whether it's our own employments, we need to meet those expectations. But with that in mind, that we need to make sure that people feel comfortable, that the atmosphere, atmosphere is comfortable coming to work, and you know what, I'm here to do my job. And if I make a mistake, what is it that I can do to correct it without feeling like, oh, I'm going to get fired because of this? You know, and that seems to be some of the, like I said, that seems to be some of the concerns. But overall, and again, overall, it was excellent. And I see that myself too, and having been working with you, yes, you know, the, there's no doubt that where we're at today is a testament to all of us working together, of course, our commission, yourself, the employees, and making this possible because we would not be here today talking about it noted and the financials look exceptional. Some of the things that we might have not been in the past, you know, but, but Ramadi city is in a great position. We are, we are in an excellent position. Granted, there's still room for growth and improvement, whether it's ourselves, I mean, what can I do to be a better mayor, for example? What can you do to be a better city manager? But that goes to all of us, commissioners, employees. And again, those are things that we can, but just to closing with that, yes, overall, what I have seen has been excellent. And I definitely thank you for your service. And again, those things that move forward, what can we do to improve on some of these things? Where the human component, human capital, or should I say that, human capital and assets as human beings, obviously, that's our greatest strength. The human element, people that are working are, that's our greatest strength, and we need to make sure that we continue to emphasize improvement on them. But in closing, yes, overall, I said, the remarks were excellent. Anything else from the commission? Mr. Perez, anything else in closing?
No, I mean, I thank you for the opportunity and, you know, the intention is both ways. I think we will all do a better job of ensuring that, you know, we address issues at the lowest level and not automatically allow things to escalate because that kind of basically portrays that there's obviously chaos. And so, it needs to be consistently done across the board in an orderly fashion from all sides.
And at this time, we'll go back into executive, executive session. It is eleven twenty-three PM. All right, we're back from executive session, it is twelve thirty-three AM. Again, thank you so much for being here and waiting. This time, we're not quite a major convenient to regular session. And for the record, we've not taken any action on item A, B, C. No action on item E, no action on item F. And at this time, we have item eight, D.
We are looking at the motion to adopt the rest of the man, city attorney to draft an amended city manager's contract to extend the term of agreement for two years. For the one-year option, the terms discussed in executive session, to offer such terms to be reviewed by the city manager. So the terms stated by the council, city council be agreeable. By our parties, the mayor is authorized to execute the contract.
We have a motion to approve, selection of city, and second is like Commissioner Gataza. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we entertain a motion for adjournment. A motion to adjourn. Like Commissioner Ramirez, accepted by Commissioner Gataza. We've had a discussion done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're done with that meeting, we're gonna, let's see how it's going.